I'm waiting for the high sign, is it okay?
I have 5:30.
Okay, perfect, perfect.
I'm anxious.
In the absence of the mayor, as deputy mayor, I will be running meetings this evening. I will make a motion to open the meeting, do I have a second?
Second.
We'll call.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Co.
Aye.
Trustee, do you like it?
Aye.
Trustee Lankir?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Let's start with department reports, we have building inspector report first.
Do we want to do the conflict of interest?
Oh, that's right. We've got housekeeping here first, thank you, sorry.
Do we have any conflict?
I have no conflict.
I have no conflict.
No.
I do not.
Okay, I'll do the open meetings compliance real quick. We have anyone online, but if you are online and you're enjoying online, you're going to miss my whole statement, please raise your hand. Don't put anything in Q and A, I don't go, oh, no, put it in Q and A, don't put it in chat, and then we'll ask the questions for the board. And everybody just be nice tonight. Okay, I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any video, who's online would, okay. The reason I ask is that we'd like to open the meeting with public comment, so if any of our residents have input for us or questions, that this at the very beginning of the meeting is a perfect time to approach the board. So with that being said, I'm assuming that you will be speaking later for the friends portion rather than now?
Someone else, if I believe is going to, I'm just here to offer support.
Okay, excellent, excellent. Okay, so now we're ready for department reports. Building inspector first.
Any questions, and you're a review of the copy of the report, correct? Any questions, sir?
I don't know if this is for you or for Zach, but since you're both here, this is perfect. I just wanted to ask, I've had a couple residents approach me about tree planting. And I know that the village owns the property between the sidewalk and the street, right, that little? So are we in the process of doing plantings, and do we have like a schedule or a map that we're, oh, really?
As a matter of fact, I had that as my member item.
Okay.
To talk to Zach about the order.
I also have the report.
So you have it in your report, which I didn't, I didn't see, it hadn't downloaded or whatever when I looked.
Okay.
So I don't have it.
Do you have a copy of my report?
I do not.
Oh, unfortunately, she got the first version.
Yeah, me too, and I just read it online, but.
There is information about trees.
Information about trees?
Yeah.
So the trees that we had budgeted, the ones that were earmarked from ARPA funds?
Yes.
A certain amount, and I gave you the list, the wish list, right? Are those the ones that you ordered?
I have not ordered any yet, because now's the time of year to start getting into another cooler nights, and hopefully a little more Pacific.
All things.
So we can move forward with that at this point, if that is, you know.
Yes, we were, I was waiting to hear from you as far as fall planting.
Okay.
Whether we would be able to have that this year or not.
I'll start digging into it and reach out to vendors to make sure that everything is available.
Did you have the list, right?
Yes, that was the ones you made back in July.
Yes, do you need me to send it again?
Let me dig into it tomorrow, I should be able to find it.
Okay.
If I can't, I'll list it.
Okay, so was it a separate ask that you had?
Yes, I didn't see the list, and it might be in there, but what I'm looking for is a tree planting in between my house and the next door, that's completely barren. And then the two trees that they took out on the property of the Parsonage home, which is the one next to the church across the street on Locust, they took two beautiful massive trees out, and it's just barren. So that area has like no trees. And what's happening is, obviously, tree calming is not happening, so you know people shoot down locusts. They take, they come off Main Street, they try to bypass the light at Jefferson and South Main. So now with that open space, it just makes them turn and fly down that street. So I think that would be really beneficial if we can kind of find.
Is it on the Locust side of your, of your property, right?
Yes, it's on the, it's on the street side, so.
So the tree on this down through there, I'm not going by memory, but it's very narrow, and it may not be a suitable place to plant a tree. But let me take a look at it.
If you take a look, yeah.
It might be able to come off of something else.
Both sides, the church side, and then the side where kids are.
Church side is paved up to the sidewalk, where the parking spots are.
No, it's not. No, it's not, there's green there.
Oh.
Not in front of church, in front of, in front of the house of the church, I'm sorry. So next to the church, in front of the house.
Yeah, if there's an open tree on there that's suitable to plant a tree, then it's not a consideration.
Because they took down their two main streets, which is on their private property side, sidewalk, and now it's completely barren, and then on my side.
Is it on your list?
Do you know if it's on the list?
I do not think that, Locust Street, I'm not 100% sure. I'd have to go back and take a look. I do remember State Street, Monroe, across from Shane's Alley, Northfield Common, it was one on State Street that's been gone for quite a long time. I think they were about 13, I was going, using that number because you figured it would be about 200, 250 per tree. And so I gave a little extra just in case, number and wish list. So, yeah, if you want to go through, and I was specific about the species as well.
Okay, if they're not on the list, then it might be for a springtime planting. Let me take a look at the planting sites, if something is suitable.
Yeah, I wish I could tell you off the top of my head, but I can't.
Well, I just also want to say that I've had two residents approach me, and they're very happy with the trees that are going into the village. They've made some comments to me that they're really happy about that, so thank you.
Very good.
Okay, because there's a dead tree on Monroe Avenue.
That one just came out of nowhere, too. As you can see in my report, I have ARPA reports for two trees. So I'm going to probably set him loose on like four or five other trees that are looking suspect. And I'm kind of, I'm worried about why that one just all of a sudden just flash died.
Yeah, so before you put another one in there, you're going to figure out what happened.
Where's that on Monroe Street, around where?
2817.
I'm from Lincoln.
Near Danielle's?
Uh, next door.
Next to Danielle's, so Ferris, Ferris House?
Yeah, it's very dead.
Yeah, and it just kind of happened on the corner, it was a strange, and it's only that one tree that just, all the users still on it, they just all turned it off. So, yeah, I need a knowledge report.
Okay.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Did you have another question for the building inspector?
No.
Anyone else have anything for the building inspector? Okay, thank you. And Zach, now we've sort of glanced over your report as well.
Do you want a copy? I get you one.
Someone provided one, thank you very much.
So, yeah, I mean, most of it's just the general work that we typically do, doing stuff, along with a lot of other stuff that we've been doing project. I do have a couple questions for the board, one of them we just talked about was the planting, the next crop of trees that we're going to be planting, which that's off your list at this point. But we've also identified the Bradford pears that everyone needed in Washington, those are invasive species. And we've discussed removing those and replanting those, and I've got a quote for the planting of them with, uh, sorry, I'm trying to find the name of it, precision crab tree, I think it is. For $1,300, perfusion crab trees, I'm sorry, yeah, for $1,392.
Per tree?
No, 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 that's to remove the existing trees and plant six new ones.
Six new ones?
Yeah.
How big are the new?
Uh, I think they're, they're the other ex- scale of a tree, so.
So is your budgeting, we need to add that in, factor that in, the $1,300, because we don't have it in the budget right now, is that right?
Um, well, so the trees that your list, the way that those are going to be funded, I think, is through the ARPA funds, so they're not directly affecting the budget.
Okay.
So if we wanted to reach into the budget and put in another patch of trees for the season, there should be money available to do so.
There's actually $4,000 in the tree budget.
In the tree budget.
Yeah.
So out of that $4,000, we would be developing a wish list that would consider the ask that you had, as well as the Bradford pear and any other trees that have died in the interim. We need to come up with a sort of a.
A schedule.
Yeah.
So if we did the six, remove the six Bradford pears, replace them with perfusion crab trees this fall, and in the springtime, we can prep for another planting of another batch. And still should, there should still be enough money available.
Is it 13 per tree or for the whole?
No, the total for planting of six trees, that $1,392 was for the removal of the Bradford pears and the planting of six perfusion crab trees.
Okay.
Just, just a thought on that, it seems that we have identified locations where we don't have trees, and possibly where some trees have died recently or been removed. I would also look at things like ash trees that we know we're going to lose very soon, and we have chemical treatments going on. And I believe we're paying annually or biannually for those chemical treatments. I guess personally, I would ask the board to look at replacing or filling in the spots where we need trees, where we don't have them now, and the trees that we know are dying, before replacing some of the invasives. You know, unless the Bradford pears are going to die soon, I just think that to achieve traffic calming and everything, I would probably just follow that order personally.
And I have a question, yeah, are the Bradford pears, are they bothering anybody right now, I mean?
Just the bees.
Yeah, the bees, the pollinators, that's kind of.
Right, but for a couple years, I mean, if we, like, like.
If you defer for a while.
If you defer for a while and get some trees in spots that there aren't on, I agree, I think that we should.
So we'll come up maybe with a list of priorities, if the priorities are provided with a, where the holes are, and maybe we can just go through and identify what the, what the priorities are for replacement, and then see where we are as far as the Bradford pear.
Your list, the 13 trees that you provided, those are the locations of missing trees, a lot of them.
Yes.
That will fill a lot of those gaps.
A lot of them, okay.
Yeah, now, the ash trees are a different, kind of a different beast if we wanted to start tackling them. Currently, we have 27 ash trees that we treat.
Wow.
And I have them set up on every other year's schedule, so half of those 27 trees will get treated one year, and then the following year will be the other trees that we treat.
And what's the cost about?
About $2,000 per year for the treatment. And all it's doing, as far as I can tell, is prolonging their life, but the inevitable death of one, you know, is going to happen. Because, I mean, there are, there is dieback and some of them, the beetles do exist here, so it's just a matter of time until, you know.
Yes, I agree with you, Justin, that we're spending a lot of money to just prolong life.
But taking the trees down are expensive, because a lot of those trees are very big.
Yes.
So. It'd be expensive to take them out.
Yeah, I mean, a 75 foot tree, which we have, I think, 10 of them, or they're about $2,700 apiece. And that's just to drop the tree to the ground, and then we still have to get rid of the stump, and the stump is usually very problematic, it's big, it takes fast to get rid of. So, touch call, you know, which is best here.
I wonder if maybe we just identify a couple of those that look the worst, maybe when the ARPA comes out next, if there are a couple that look like they're going to go even with the treatments, maybe we take a look at those.
Sure, once they're identified, then what is the plan?
Figure out the cost to, you know, maybe we use some of the budget to get rid of the worst one and plant some in its place.
Okay, so do we keep treatments going for the, we just got a round of treatments, and done late spring to mid summer.
Can the ARPA give us an idea of which trees are going to maybe last a year, and which ones are going to last like four?
Yeah, I mean, they will last, you know, longer, but I mean, if we're not, if we're going to, if that is the plan moving forward, then I'll discontinue the treatments of them if we're going to take them.
Well, I don't know if we're going to be able to afford to take them all down.
Right, you can't discontinue.
It would kind of be a gradual thing, I would focus on some of the ugliest, the worst ones, that look like they're not going to make it.
Just start them.
The ARPA says that this one, you know, even with treatment, it's going to be a year, and it's going to go, then we'll take that one down and leave the other one.
There are two suspect trees down on the farther south that was all tied back.
Do we have someone online who wants to?
No, I'm just pumping in that, I'm joining in to tell you that we have 12,500 set for tree maintenance variables.
Thank you.
So we do budget for that as well.
And I would like to see also if we could take a look at Locust Street and see if we can try to get that planting in the, in the fall, if we have, if we have some money there, and the board thinks that we can even pop one tree in that space. Because when you guys look at it, take a look, it's very barren.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so the tree that's on the side of the building here, the dogwood next to the stairs, they go down to the basement in front of the building, I don't know if you've noticed, but it's dead at this point. So I'll leave, yeah, I'll leave it, it's been falling off. The client drain at the bottom of the stairs, when it rains, we've been getting pretty heavy rainfall lately, it tends to build up inside of the stairwell, and overflows the curb, goes underneath the door, and starts washing out into the basement.
Didn't it, didn't it have a beautiful bloom this spring, or no?
It bloomed, but there's still a lot of dieback, and if you look at the branches, the branches are starting to rot out, the leaves are going to pull on at this point, the ones that are still hanging on are for out.
So it needs to go, is what you're saying, yes?
Yeah, the base of the tree, near the stump, is, there's a hole in it, so it's got to go.
And it needs replacing?
Yeah.
Right?
We have to replace, I mean, we don't have to.
So we might want to add that to the list of replacements.
All right, that's something that we can handle ourselves.
Okay.
So we can take that down, if we want to put a new tree in, that's up to you guys, we can figure something out with that.
Add it to the wish list that I, that you have, along with the tree on the street, and see if we have enough from the ARPA funds to be able to cover.
You don't think, you don't think that Frank Galusho might be a good donation?
I'm probably more doing the bench, I'll talk about the bench.
Right on the property of the village, Frank having a tree donated to him.
Where is it?
Where the other ones can be replaced, I'm just thinking that's on village property, he was a village trustee, it might be a really great spot where he'd be really remembered, or remembered, I don't know. Is the family involved at all, or not with the tree, with the bench donation, or is this something that we're doing for Frank?
The village has purchased two benches, and we have $2,500 for it, and one of them will be dedicated to Frank, and will be at the top of Northfield Common.
Okay, so that's something that we did, the family did, by a vest.
Yes, it's already, it was already passed by the board at previous meeting last year.
Is Zach okay to remove the tree by the village hall?
Yes.
Zach, you're talking about this taller one, right?
Yep.
Okay. I will make a motion that we authorize the DPW to remove the ailing dogwood tree that sits in front of village hall, do I have a second?
Are we going to be replacing it?
I'm sorry?
Will we replace it in that same motion, or are you going to?
Yes, sure, and it will, it will be replaced in kind.
In kind?
Yes. Do I have a second?
My second?
Trustee, do you like it?
Aye.
Trustee Co.
Aye.
Trustee Marshall.
Aye.
Trustee Lankir.
Aye.
Another big tree pass.
Thank you.
So there's actually a dogwood on the opposite side of the building, and then there's one up against, is this the Wythe's house? Yeah.
Okay.
So it looks like, you know.
It's contiguous.
Yeah.
It's like a dog.
There's a green one.
Okay, good.
So this Bradford pear out back here, this is another, this one right here, this is something that we can take down ourselves, too, if we want to get rid of another invasive, we can take it down ourselves, or we plant it ourselves.
The difference in my view of these Bradford pears is they're not invading anything, I mean, they're, they're just there, right? Is there a persistent and material adverse impact on the environment if they stay there until we feel like dealing with them later?
Well, again, I mean, they serve no good purpose for pollinating, in fact, they attract bees, and bees, it doesn't help them do anything, it swears them out. So, I mean, considering invasions for.
But they're, they still provide shade and beauty, and I don't know if we have to really worry about.
So we're not feeling compelled as a board right now to deal with bad pear trees?
I think those guys.
That's what I'm hearing.
Just, just wanted to clarify, my understanding of the last motion is that the replacement in kind refers to species and not size. Is there a bee on the, yeah, I have the same paper, I can't make sure.
Actually, we just planted another dogwood out back, we'll do something on the same size as that.
Great.
Okay.
All right, so.
So we have a motion, right?
This is the space.
So we have a motion, do, oh, okay.
And Zach, you've got plenty of other work, it's not like you're looking for work with.
Yeah, not looking for tree planting work.
Just making sure.
Yeah, no, no.
I mean, I figure we'll come back to it, but we'll probably put some of this into a bigger plan.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I still have more.
Hanging baskets we discussed, we're going to throw those down.
Yes.
All right, we'll do that immediately, and then, flowers and urns, we're going to, we need a time meeting.
Yes.
Reassess in a week.
Yeah.
And then.
And then they'll be put aside for the, for the garden club, because they want to also rescue the soil as well as the plants.
Okay.
So then the others will just plop in there, the moms that are at my house, you just give me a day's notice, and they're all ready to go.
Okay, yep, and so the moms that are going to be planted in the pot pots in front of the old SJ's building, we can do that, right?
Yes, they'll go right in the ground.
Okay.
The others, except for the super pot, those might have to be in the dirt that's already in the super pot. It's filled with plants, if the plants come out, and then the mom is planted in that, I think it will do a little bit better, because the pots are kind of big.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Are you available tomorrow for the United Southwater and Bradville?
Absolutely, yeah, if you just text me, let me know. The other part of this is, and I just speak to the mayor about it, was to replant, which we have not done before, that I recall, these, the mums that we've purchased from Bunshoes, that once their season is done, that we plant them in key spots in the village, because they'll come back, and they'll come back, and they'll come back.
Okay, yeah.
So we talked about the entryways to the village, that they could be planted there, there's 24 plants altogether.
Okay.
Where do we plant, where can we plant them?
The entrance spaces.
Like State Street on either side, you know, where the crosswalk is, there's that.
Yep, State Street on the other side of South Main Street.
Yeah, where the DOT kind of made a mess right there.
Yeah.
We could put them there.
Oh, the crosswalk.
Yeah, the cross, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So that kind of.
We can turn that into our own personal garden if you want.
Sure.
But we can't assume that someone, you know, the property owner.
And start putting things there as we come across them. Although the ones that are in the grounded SJ's, we might just leave them there, why not? Until we've got something else to replace them.
Because they don't.
Okay, so those can stay, the ones that are in the pots, put them in the ground.
Okay.
So the six on village, six on village hall steps, there's three urns, and there's two super pots.
Okay.
Okay.
So we're also talking about beautification, Zach, you and I talked a little bit about meeting, me, you, and Zach, about the garbage can and the urn placement for probably spring. So can we, I'll, I'll email you guys and set up a meeting for the three of us, so we can show him our plan that we had given.
Sure.
Okay.
Him, and then we'll see what, how we need to.
Find out what the, what the requirements are, as far as placing them, and the size, and all the, what the requirements are.
Quite a bit, $2,000.
Yeah, there is, yeah.
Yeah, so we'll have a meeting and figure out how we need to go about this, and show you our schematic.
You guys have tighter schedules, and just let me know when it is.
Okay. I'll send you an email.
Okay. I think that's all I have for questions for you guys. Any questions for me?
No.
Okay.
Thank you, Zach.
Thank you.
Now, Dorothea.
I'm so excited. All right, so first thing, first up is the bill pay. This money's a little heavy, we have quite a few things in here.
I am assuming that, for instance, 157, 150 are all covered by insurance.
Yes, some of, no, I take that back, portion was agreed to be used out of ARPA, so I'm going to ask the board to release some ARPA funds to cover. We agreed to, the carpeting downstairs should be covered by ARPA. The upstairs was covered by insurance.
Okay, okay. So that, so that we know where the funds are?
Yep.
Let me, okay.
On that same page, 153, can you?
These are our payments for our lease agreements, or I believe this is the 4350. And we just got notified, we're going to be paying one of the other people.
So you pay those all once?
Once a year.
Once a year, okay, so that's what.
It's not like your normal lease agreements where you pay monthly, we pay at one time.
Okay, what's the rabble?
The rabble is people.
Got it.
I have some questions, 128, 128, Action Telephone, what is that, July and August?
128 is our answering service.
So we pay, that's per month? The $59, $73 per month, we pay, oh, no, July and August, okay, for your answering service.
Yep.
136, glass beads?
Yes, those are reflective beads for striking roads for paint, we put it in wet paint, and then we have those painted lines, and the popper, which is invited, it's one of them as well.
Looking at 134, 135, so I'm seeing a lot of nursery costs. Do we have a contract or relationship with one nursery that helps us all the time with everything we do?
We put this up to bid, is what we do.
Every year?
Every year, the baskets, we go up to bid for Bunshoes, if it's under a certain amount, we do business with Bunshoes with the basket, they tend to be really the only bidder. We tend to grab all the other supplies from them.
Is it better maybe to think about reaching out to some of these, you know, nurseries and see if we can do a long-term deal with them, that they would give us everything we need throughout the year, and even if we signed something?
We can try that, we have, every year, we go out, like I said, for the baskets, and we have a hard time getting them to respond to even bid on the basket.
Or maybe if it was a three-year deal, they might be more willing to work with us, and we wouldn't have to.
If it's going to be longer than that, that's going to require us to put it out to bid, and that's going to be a bid situation where they're going to have to come in. In this, we can just get quotes for the service, which usually moves things along a lot quicker. And then the other problem is if we have a problem with a vendor, let's say for some reason the baskets came in and they were not good, you don't have the option of, you're still working with that same vendor year after year. So it's, you know, it tends to benefit us both ways.
Time to assess, this would be in January, they go to the flower shows, typically, so any of the growers, you want to reach out to them, and what I did in the past was to write up a bid quote, and send it to four different growers, and to see who responded. And then the board would make a decision based upon the, the overall cost, and the last.
And that's when we do that, every year?
I did not, I did not take care of it the last year or two, the mayor did, so, but previously, I would send it out, and then get responses, and I would bring them to the board, and the board would decide which, which grower they felt most comfortable with. We can adjust things like the number of baskets we purchase, say, the board thought that 6,500 is too much, we don't want to spend that much, we could reduce the number of baskets. So there are options.
But that's when the bid goes out in January, and that's when.
Yes, we want to probably start talking about that in December, because the bids should go out in January.
Okay, thank you.
And the same process is happening.
Right.
Okay, number 140, this cost for the FX board, that is their private.
Yep.
Do we have any more information on what's happening with that, or is this something that's.
That's ongoing.
We don't know, okay.
Could I come back to the baskets for just a minute? Could I, Dorothea, do you keep a agenda in the system where you've got like November's agenda, December's agenda, where you can put something in there now so we know that it's there? So for example, with the baskets, could we request you today to include the basket conversation in the December agenda?
Sure, can.
That'd be great.
Well, that way, we can almost give to you, and if we look forward over the next six months or 12 months, we're going to have things we want to do in December. The last thing I want to do is to make sure all of us absolutely remember when we have a clerk who can assist.
I'm just, you're so good.
Yeah, I was going to say, I mean, that's pretty constant here every year, that's caused a DPW heavily, so it's never a conversation that's missed.
Thank you, Dan, perfect, that's very welcome.
It's not what we can.
This is my first year coming into work.
No, we can't, because, and typically, the baskets are approved during our budget discussions, because it's right smack in there when reordering them, so, no, I can, definitely.
I mean, I think it's just need to have the opportunity to say, could we talk about that in December? And know whether or not you guys have all done it, if the board wants to have even a two-minute conversation on it, to know that we could ask you to just make sure it's in the agenda. And we might slip it into the DPW report, we might slip it into something else, but at least we know it's there.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, I want to address the big, big elephant in the room, 176 to 178, all these.
A lot of this has to do with the.
Five State Streets.
It's good that you pointed that out.
It's $25,000, guys.
Yes, because we did not have budgeted for that.
No, we do not have budgeted.
So, so I'm just saying, like, what is this, and why, and crazy, and.
And we're stuck.
Okay, so, so the residents need to know, whoever's online and listening, we've got $25,000 this month in this legal issue for five State Streets.
Correct.
Okay. Which is, which is not something that we.
Nothing we can anticipate, nothing we don't have.
Look for, or anything that we did, the village didn't do anything, but now it's in our, in our.
It's an expense, yep. Yep, and I'll be taking a big hearty anal on it. I have June financials in here, I have July, when I come back with July next meeting, I'm going to ask about transfers because I'm going to have to look at the funding of all this, how it's going to impact already.
So I don't know how often that happens. Like, how often does this happen where we get this big, huge chunk of things that we didn't bank on?
Unfortunately, more often than we like, litigation is a problem.
Always unexpected, okay.
Always unexpected. You can anticipate some, but to truly anticipate what could happen every year, you'd be overbudgeting if anything does happen. So you try not to, you try to find a happy balance, but this is obviously nothing we anticipated, and it adds up very quickly.
It sure does. So when we talk about long-term capital planning, is that something that we really need to look at and kind of get a history of what's happened and how these little things jump in?
It's a good question. I'm not sure if we can set up a reserve for litigation. It's because it's so innocuous, you could go without having any litigation. So I'll check into it.
Yeah, let's just kind of dabble in that and see. I mean, look at the history over the last 10 years and how much, I mean.
Oh, if I look at the history over the next 10 years.
That's going to be, sorry, yeah, maybe not the last 10 years, that's a big one. But hopefully we won't have another 10 years like that. But, I mean, look at it, that's 10 years, 12 years, right?
Yep.
So I think that we probably should think about that when we.
It's a difficult thing. That's why you want to keep your fund balance healthy to help cover some of these things.
Okay. All right, let me just see, I know I'm kind of nitpicking you guys, but I just wanted to ask questions because, all right, that was what I had in mind.
Justin, did you have any questions about the bill pay?
I do not.
I love Dave, but do you have any questions about the bill pay?
No, I did just have one comment home on trustee Coe's comments with regards to the five State Street. If anybody does have an interest, it is the Monroe County Supreme Court and its docket number E 2023005785.
Thank you. All right, would someone like to make a motion that we approve the bill pay?
Make a motion to approve, approve the bill pay as presented.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Lightfoot?
Aye.
Trustee Lanier? Along with the bill pay, I'm going to ask for the board to authorize the use of ARPA funds to cover the carpet replacement in the Village Hall downstairs, and also for the integrated bill for the re-cabling, which is part of all getting the systems and everything in place. So we can take this safely from ARPA.
To clarify, we did discuss this during the budgeting and the board at that time prioritized outstanding issues that we had with the, with the Village Hall and, and other things. And we earmarked a specific amount of money for improvements and that included the carpeting. And so that is where the money is coming from out of the budget. So do we have a motion regarding the use of the ARPA funds for, for, to verify the use of the ARPA funds for the replacement of the carpet?
Well, it was already approved, though, for the other.
We, you have to, even though you authorized the use of ARPA funds in the past, I have to amend the budget, so let me see if I can bear this.
No, there's a specific amount.
And amend the budget, the use of the ARPA funds to cover these expenses. Every time you go to, you can't kind of pre.
Okay.
Can we just clarify what the amounts are then?
Sure.
Would it be 150, 158 for $8,750 for the carpet?
No.
Okay.
Let me put that.
Wishful, thank you, okay. It's the one right below it. I put mine over here, but.
Oh, no, it is the 8,000.
8,000 for the carpet, right?
You got that right. It's the 8,000, which we were hoping to keep to 10,000, so that's really good news.
And then the cabling was about six lower down, I believe.
Yeah, integrated, the re-cabling was $6,948.49.
Okay.
And that was just bringing us, coming up with our cable, and we discussed it, we were at a cat three, now we're at a cat six throughout, we cleaned up a lot of the wires. If anybody ever wants to stop in the hall and see all of the changes, please do, we're very proud.
Okay, based on those amounts and prior discussion of the board, I'll make a motion to authorize the use of ARPA funds for those two purchases.
I second.
No call?
Okay, trustee Lightfoot?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Lanier?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, so that was a lot of fun. Let's go on to financials. And there's not a lot to say about financials. It's the first month, and of course, everything goes pretty. We have some negatives, and I'll clarify those, because of some late transfers. Unfortunately, if we do a bill pay or payroll and it comes to the end of the month, if the transfer happens after, it creates this negative. We didn't go negative in any balances, we had money in there to cover all that. So it's just, we've seen this before, we're working on making those transfers more timely, so we don't have that issue. But so far, I have no concerns with anything. It's too soon, July, I started July so far, and as I said, you'll have that for the next round. And hopefully August, because we just got the bank statements for August.
If you could remind me, I know every time we post the agenda, we don't include much of these financials. Is there a reason why we don't?
Past practice. They're available, it's an ongoing thing, it's like the bills. Anybody can foil for them, they're free to do that. Until the board approves them, they're really draft.
So this is a draft?
Until you say you're, you're accepting these, they're kind of a draft.
And we don't post anything online, so if somebody had any.
No, I put it in, it's in my report. It's, my report shows up in there that I have June financials.
But not what they are.
But not what they are.
Yeah, so, all right, one of the challenges is nobody loves to foil anything because they just feel like, it's, I don't, I don't want to foil stuff. So my question is, is, as a board, do we want to change the practice possibly to where we maybe post on the website or embedded in the, the month or the first meeting following approval, the quarterly financials? Not the budget items, but the general fund balance. So if we move to approve these as stated, we just include them in the subsequent full meetings agenda as just record.
Or I can go back and show it with that meeting.
My, my preference would probably be to actually have it linked onto the website and instruct the clerk to, to link it onto the website, maybe under the budget section or something, but.
Actually, I have an idea. There's a section in there that is budget in our documents. I can create financials and start a year.
I think that'd be great.
Quarterly.
Yeah, quarterly seems reasonable to me.
Okay, whichever you want to do, I'll be happy to do that. It's just never been a past practice, as I said.
I just think it makes sense.
Are we sure the web server can handle, handle the load of everything?
No, I'm not sure. The web server, actually, just so the board is aware, we are looking for a new website because the current website program wants to double our costs, and we're not very happy with them anyways, so we have to be gone by December. So we are talking to vendors right now.
Okay, that'd be great. And I do see this, the budget and financials, do you need a motion for that, or is that just something that?
I think I can just take and.
Process.
And as far as the other group comments, so on there is the final general budget, so if somebody wants to look at this year's budget, we can go into that. And maybe this is just practice, the last column says proposed budget, so even though it's been adopted and it is the current budget, it just simply says as proposed budget.
It's the way the program knows.
Is it possible to have that say adopted budget or have another?
I think it's, it's the program.
Let's just, this is.
Our software.
Yeah, okay, well, at a minimum.
At a minimum, I can go ahead and start posting.
Yeah, let's post quarterly's, and so if we move to approve these, it'd be great to post them.
Yep. It's not a problem.
I didn't have any questions on it, so I would move to approve the financials as provided. I'll second, June financials.
For water and general, I mean sewer in general.
For sewer and.
For general and sewer, whichever way.
Yeah. I'll amend my motion to be for sewer and general, as.
Okay. All right, trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Lightfoot?
Aye.
Motion passes.
You know, Dave, just a suggestion, I, I think that in general, it's a good thing to be specific about what we want to tap down, and I think that posting the budget is, is a substantial enough thing. Would you consider making a motion to post the quarterly financials?
I certainly do, I mean, it's, we'll get it done, so why not? I'll make a motion that quarterly financials are posted under the budget and financial section of the website after adoption on each quarter.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, trustee Lightfoot?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Lanier?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Great.
Okay, so the last thing I had, I put it under my agenda, my reports, was the multi-year planning. I know you added it, it is at the end of the thing. If we want, we can touch on it now and knock it off if you'd like, or accept it to the board.
To the deputy mayor.
I can, are you okay? We just scratched the end of the multi-year at the end, do it now.
Trustee Lanier?
Whatever you like, whatever you prefer.
If we get it done tonight, I don't care.
Okay, good. So I think you were looking for an update as to where we were?
Yes, and to have the confidence to believe that we can get it done internally in time to have it be completed so that our attorney can draft the reserves and all in time, you know, for next year's budgeting process, so.
I would say yes to that question with the assistance of the board, okay? We have made great strides within it. I handed you some sheets from me and Zach, okay? The first one is the village reserves, we added the additional reserve of the technology on there. This is the lifespan we thought would take to fully fund the reserves. We noted, you'll see in sewer, there, it's been very healthy where it's funded, and some of those reserves are fully funded, okay? So these are the reserves we are looking to have Jeff set up. Some of the questions Jeff needs to have answered is how quickly we want to access the money. My suggestion is always to put it up to referendum when we go to establish the reserve, because then we can get to the funds a lot quicker with a motion on the board. Which seems to me, if you're looking at a, a repair reserve, is you're looking to fix something right then, you don't want to wait for it to have timeout like that, you really want to make those repairs as needed. So that's a further discussion we need to have with the board. Once we get all that ironed out, we'll make our recommendations. These are our number of recommendations for these reserves. Obviously, it's the board who will look at that and make a final decision whether they think that's healthy enough or too healthy, or should be funded in less time.
All right, so right now, we have general, and we have sewer.
Correct.
All right, so under general, I personally, in Broadway Inn, I mean, I would love to have general and break it up into equipment and equipment, you know, repair, and then infrastructure.
Yep.
Right? And then I don't mind if technology's part of infrastructure, I guess, but, and then I'd like to see parts and wreckers there.
Well, why don't we have that discussion?
I mean, does that make sense to people? To have more than just two reserves, or do we want to have the reserves be so general that?
Oh, we have, we're looking, two, three, four, five, six, we're looking at seven reserves.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, so let me make sure I understand this right. So right now, we have a repair reserve, which is existing funds.
Right, and let me address that, that repair reserve, and this is the other thing I need the board to think hard on, the existing reserve for A232R, the repair reserve, is not established correctly with the language that needs to be. So it needs to be dispersed into a new reserve.
Yep, so we've got to fix it.
You guys need to think where you want to allocate those funds to. And the same problem exists with G232VR reserve, that needs to be dispersed again into the sewer reserves. So obviously, I'd find a percentage where we think, you know, do we want to put more in the equipment reserve? In that case, you know, it gets 50%, maybe the rest get 10%, you know, something like that. So keep that in mind when we have that discussion, but continue.
Okay, and then the, the subsequent lists you've provided here, and just for the public, we've been provided a list of different items that would be under a, a general reserve and then sewer reserve, but each of these would be their own. So equipment, vehicle reserve, equipment, vehicle, repair reserve, all right, I like that, breaking them up seems to have some value. Buy the equipment and then you fix it, and eventually, if you're not, you know, if you're sinking too much money in the repair reserve, you might as well buy a new equipment. So building reserve, building repair. Now, the building reserve, so I think what this is, is a lump sum for a new DPW building?
That is the intent, it's a start, it's a thought. This was something the board didn't know if they were comfortable with establishing yet. Because it's hard to put a number on that, because we haven't actively.
But this is the idea of.
The idea of it is, at some point, yeah, at some point, we need to address the DPW, and we start somewhere is better than starting nowhere.
Hey, I mean, these are, if we're financing roads, then we're going to have to self-pay for something, right? And we're going to want to build it, and we need to rationalize, right, and make allocations for all of these things. So I think that's good to at least put it down. But if you've got maybe a little bit more information on some of the things that you might be putting in there, it might be helpful. Because if I were to give to the public, building reserve 750, and it's the biggest line item of all the bunch, and the public doesn't immediately know, so what I think we might want to do here is, if you could, maybe put a couple of the things down that are indebted. So in the vehicles, it'd be nice to know, when I'm looking at 750 and we're going to approve, you know, $75,000 a year going in the reserves, what is that buying us? One dump truck and a cleaner? Or is that all of our vehicles? Is that our fleet?
The fleet, I think.
The point was to be able to have the full value.
Perfect.
Or every vehicle that would be in the rotation.
Perfect.
To replacements, guys.
Perfect, so could you, on each of these, have just a separate line that says, okay, we got to 750 with these six vehicles over these 15 years, right? So show us that cycle, because what I think we're going to have to do as a board is make some really tough decisions. Because we're not going to be able to go in and immediately fund all these reserves at once, so we're going to have this line item. And there's really no way for us to meaningfully line item the 750 bulk number, right?
Look, let me really quick explain one thing. The reason why it's kind of loose is you want it loose. If you make it too tight, and you're very specific, it's only for the replacement of these five vehicles, you can't, let's just say, we didn't put dump truck, okay? And we want to replace the dump truck. We can't use that reserve because we are too specific.
Or we wanted to add a vehicle to the fleet.
Yeah, so this is where I think the language for the reserves is a little different than the language for the long-term planner, how we're doing the long-term planning, right? So the language for the reserves has to be loose enough to identify anything in the equipment vehicle reserve subheading within the long-term plan. But when we present a long-term plan to the public to say, this is what we need to raise in terms of tax revenue, and how much we're going to sink into that reserve, we want to give them something other than just the lump number.
Right.
Yeah, following up on that point, I guess, to me, just to put this into very simple terms, it feels like we're coming at this a little bit backwards still. We're starting with the reserves, this lump amount, where what we really want to do is justify what we need, right? And if you look at the rest of the package, so we've got, which is helpful, thank you for putting this together, we've got the reserves here, how much we want for each section, and then the next few pages discuss the vehicles. That's basically the most developed itemization of costs and assets that we have of all the village assets. Like basically, we just have spreadsheets on vehicles, right? And that goes back to Frank Alucia's time, I think, and those have been maintained. But what I really want to see, and what I think we're missing here, and this is the, as far as talking about next steps, and where honestly, I feel a little bit blocked as a board member too, is that what we really need is to, you know, start from the biggest expenses that we're facing as a village, and most municipalities, of course, spend the most on roads. So based on our previous discussions, we need to rebuild most of the 15 miles of roads in the village. So how do we get to, you know, build up a schedule of what we're going to spend there, and then kind of get back to the reserves again? And that's something that I think we really need action from village administration, from Zach and others.
But I think you're jumping ahead of me. This isn't complete.
Yeah, we know, no.
Okay, understand, this isn't complete. You're restructuring the spreadsheets that weren't user-friendly.
Yep. This is great.
This is what you did, you started with.
That's great.
I know you feel it's backwards, but it actually does go into the multi-year planning, which I completed the controller document today, so I have all those numbers in, so we'll get there. I didn't print that out because, again, it's cumbersome. Zach's established a new way of presenting the information of replacement, and we're getting your feedback on this. This is a sample. If you like this, this is something he will start doing, taking from the big spreadsheet to give you an idea of what should be done, because the big spreadsheet was not user-friendly. That was one of the tasks we were given. And the roads, I believe, for the assessment that's being done, reports being gotten from GPI, so we can't include those yet. So what we're anticipating is we have a couple of questions that go back to the board, and then we want a meeting in early October to continue the multi-year planning, because it is a workshop item. It really needs to be discussed with the board. We need your decisions on some of these items. Some of the things even affecting the multi-year cap planning, as I'm looking at the numbers and punching them in to look at percentages and things like that, which is a great tool, I need to know what we're going to do about the SUER allocation. That has to be answered, and how we're going to do that, because that does affect both budgets. I can't see where we're going to be for the next couple of years without knowing how much is actually going to be properly allocated to SUER. So these are discussions we need to have with the board. We are a lot further along than it looks, because we want to give you a sample of something.
This is good. Like, it's start, no, go ahead.
No, I just, from my perspective, this is not helpful, and I just want to be upfront as a board member. The time to switch the spreadsheets into a Word document is wasted. I would rather just have a spreadsheet. It doesn't really help me to move forward or see anything. I don't know where that direction came from, but I feel like we have not moved ahead at all, because we still don't have a better understanding of what the big expense items are, and I'd like to see that.
Well, then, I'm going to say then the board needs to jump in, because we did receive direction that the sheets were too cumbersome, not user-friendly. We tried to table it down, so they were. So that's what Zach has been working on, so that it was more direct as to what needs to be replaced every year, so that we're looking on the schedule. So that was a direction I was given.
Let me follow the thought of, how can we arrive at actionable information? And this is great beginning, because you got everything listed out, where it's at, where it's valued at, right, what the replacement value is right now, and you have a budgeted expense needed. That would be if you replace it today, based on a new vehicle minus current value, that's the cost. Obviously, we're not going to replace them all day. So the challenge that we have is for almost every vehicle, right, there has to be some estimated depreciation over time. And for every estimated cost, there has to be some estimated inflation over time. And then there has to be a optimal time to purchase, and the last possible chance we can purchase. And this goes to Justin's comment in terms of getting this data into a spreadsheet, right? So right now, what we can't quite get from any of this, right, is that linear chart of each item. So just imagine A, B, and C, like here's three vehicles, and years across the top, right? And then dollar amounts coming in when it has to be replaced. And then behind the scenes, you can have the current value, the cost, and then whatever year you're grabbing that you're going to replace it, there's a difference. And that difference goes in, right, the long-term plan on that year. Because what's going to happen is if we're going to be in a position to purchase the vehicles that we want to purchase in years 1, 2, 3, 4, right, and get away from the sales ditch at the end of every year for every budget cycle, we want to accumulate all that, right, in advance. And so we could go the route of just having a target number, but it doesn't give us the detail of what it's purchasing. And so when we authorize it to come out of the reserves, we want to know, we want to have this nice plan in place. Okay, we're doing this this year, this next year. And so speaking to the roads, you know, we're doing a million-dollar road project, right? Is it 600,000, 700,000, or, you know, if we didn't get state funding, it's like a million-dollar road project. And to Justin's comment, what we have, 15 times that to do, it's a mile, how long is the road, and how many roads do we have to do? Pretty much all of them, right? So it's possible we could have a million dollars.
Every year.
Every single year. So if we're going to prioritize, and we've got to get that work from GPI, so that's in the works, right, that's coming back to us. And so what I hope with GPI would do is take all these roads and say, here's, you know, here's when you're going to have to start working on them. And what I'm hoping is we can look at these different lump sum items, and then have a linear, from now to the future, have a linear diagram inside of a spreadsheet that tells us when these costs are coming in, right? Because from there, we can do just a, how much do you need in the account at any given point to fund that?
Is there some kind of template that we're going to find that's that kind of...
Just spreadsheet work. So this is...
Yes, it's spreadsheet work, but you guys are being very specific, and I've asked this before from the board. You have something in your mind, what you want to do. We're not needing it, so we put labor into something that...
Can you take years, I mean, there's only three years that I've got laid out on those three sheets apart for the equipment placement. Is it difficult for you to put that into a spreadsheet and use as a model?
So we have to inform it. I mean, we're happy to do the work, we just, the controllers don't, I would tell you, what we got from, because we talked to Hilton, we got very similar to this from Hilton. This is what they used. So you're looking for something that doesn't exist that we can look at.
Very simple outline, okay? In the columns, no, I'm sorry, in the rows, okay, in the rows. Take your headings, and then underneath it, just have all the things that you want to buy, right? And then across the way, have years. And then just drop in when these costs are going to occur. And then from there, we can worry about is a lump sum.
So basically, the inverse of what I produced there?
Yeah, so this is the sum total of all the things that you...
No, 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 the other sheet that shows the vehicle replacement schedule for years.
You can take all this detail, and if it's in a spreadsheet format, you can take the current value, the future value, figure out the difference, and then all you have to do is do, grab that difference. And if you want to purchase it in five years, because that's the term of life of that particular vehicle, you just inflate it by 3% or 4% with inflation, and let's hope to have that how inflation is. I know it's not right now, right, but the other thing you can do is, once you're in the spreadsheet...
So, I mean, just put it in perspective, trying to find the replacement, you go online and you push in like 2017, Ford F-450 with dump body, plow package, seltzer and all that stuff. There are very few vehicles that you can use to use as a reference on what their current value for the market price is. So it's being made up as the market is demanding, so you can't really, you know, create a working model of that.
Give us something, an errand side of caution.
That's, I mean, that's all reflected in that sheet right there.
Okay, good, then you just grab these values then. So for example, you're using budgeted expense needed 40,000. That's if we replace it to debt, right? So what you want to do is, your first page is just all the things you're going to buy and the years you're going to buy. Every page after that, right, the different tabs across your Excel, is going to be your calculations for the various things. It could be all vehicles on one page and all something else on the other. And then what you're saying is, it's 40 grand now, but five years from now, we expect depreciation to be faster for this vehicle than other vehicles. So then you just got to do a plug number and have it all be the same for everything. That's fine.
So I think, you know, to me, it's not so much the format that matters. I think as long as we're capturing some kind of value, some kind of a decrease in value, it doesn't matter. You know, what we had, as far as I'm concerned, what we had before for vehicles was basically all that we needed. My concern is that we need to capture the other assets, Village Hall, DPW Building, and the streets. And we need to start denting those areas and saying, what are the most expensive things? Roof on Village Hall. How much is it? How long does it last, right? And just start working across those thematic areas, and you can give us a really ugly spreadsheet, I don't care. You know, we just need some kind of numbers to work with.
All right, so let me get this straight. So the way that the existing, not this version, the existing spreadsheet from the vehicle replacement schedule is satisfactory for you.
I don't think it's that bad. I thought it was pretty well detailed, and I wouldn't have really focused on it.
I'm not going to focus on that. The road, the road schedule, the road maintenance schedule. Now, that is kind of based off the same spreadsheet as the vehicle replacement schedule. So what do you need manipulated on that to make it satisfactory?
I don't, when I looked at that last, at least, what we need are values and lifetimes. And if we've got a value to do something, and a lifetime over which it lasts, then we can just calculate the rest out. It's not too complicated.
I mean, every year, they're updated with, you know, the most accurate assessment of the surface as it exists then. Their values of maintenance is kind of unnecessary to determine at point if the road is not going to be revisited for another 10 years or five years, you know. You can kind of project it, but the way the world moves... And especially when it comes to the materials that are necessary for doing that and the labor that goes along with it, that's, I may as well just update that once a year to make it as compliant as...
Would GPI have a better understanding of that information that we need, and you were using it as a consultant?
They are an engineering firm, and they will charge you for that information, but I'm sure they can produce something very detailed for you.
Here's a suggestion for the streets. So we have the roads. We need to reflect accurately the next treatment, which is basically restructuring for the 13 miles that we haven't touched yet, you know, subtracting South and Wood. And we have maybe a ballpark per mile of that to be done, so we just kind of, you know, copy that down for all those roads. And that's the cost that we have, that we're facing right now, right?
Oh, that's simple enough to produce that.
Exactly.
If we're not going to look at it as a per road, or we can attach a dollar amount per mile, per square foot, per cubic foot, per square yard, however you want to look at it.
Per intersection.
Per intersection.
Have some modified cost per intersection.
At this point, I mean, we can do something like that, but it's only going to make sense to, you know...
Well, it's easy right now, because the condition of all the roads is bad, right? So if all the roads need restructuring, all of the conditions are the same, and you just do like a per mile cost. Next year, once we're done with South and Wood, then you subtract those, and you say it's got a 30-year lifespan or whatever, and the cost to maintain will be X until, you know, you get to the end of that window.
Would be easier, I mean, if you actually said, we have $300,000 this year to go through road work, you know.
In order to give you the $300,000 a year for the road work, we need to start from the overall amount with the values and lifetimes. And that should be super cooked together, because like I said, the condition is all the same and all that.
I think I can produce what you're asking.
Here's what we don't want to do, right? We don't want to have $300,000 to $500,000 of road work every year, but because it's not been put in the long-term plan appropriately...
For the next 10 years.
Yeah, I know. If it's not put in the long-term plan, we can't rationalize it to the tax, right, to residents, and then we don't get it in the reserves, and if it's not in the reserves, then you got to pitch it on the budget every single year. And that's what we don't want.
All right, this may take some help from you as well. To produce something, I can, you know, make something as detailed as possible, you know, portraying the roads as they exist, all the work that needs to be done moving forward, and also all the data that I think you're looking for.
Just don't spend, I would say, don't spend too much time on it. Just do a simple first pass with the roads, the, you know, average cost per mile based on the projects that we have coming up, and then toss it back to me, and I can take a look, right? And the same with other assets.
And you can, one other thing to do, like I mentioned in things like inflation, you can give us current value for everything. So what I mean by that is, if we know we need to replace a vehicle in five years, and right now, that vehicle is 50 grand and it's going to cost 90, okay? Just show me those two values, right? But put it, I know it's in here, but I don't know, it doesn't have a date to it. And so just give me the years and the items and where it's going to be, right? Because from there, and the same with like the building, when is the roof going to need to be done, right? What's the average cost to repair, do you think? And just give me a linear number, like 10 grand plus inflation, and try to have it all just date, and everything just rolling down that date, right?
Perfect. So then Zach's got the DPW, and Zach's got the streets, and then, Dorothy, are you the one who's going to do the building?
I'll do buildings as part of my preview anyway.
I deal with the numbers with the multi-year. I have all that ready to do.
And then what else do we need? So we have streets, DPW, building, SUER.
Vehicles, we can address that as well.
What else, I'm sorry?
Vehicles.
Vehicles, right, DPW.
I would put parks and recreation.
Parks and rec.
You may not necessarily need...
What kind of data are you looking for there?
So there might be a big zero for a long time, or it might be a nominal cost for things over time, right? Improvements to...
Machine place, right?
Whatever public spaces we have up to and including the arboretum.
As they exist.
As they exist, and there doesn't have to be anything, and we could plug it, we just want to have that right in line item. We may never fund a reserve, we may fund the reserve, right? But it's, if we've got a plan to do something pretty great, but we don't want to do it for 10 years, we got to fund it along the way, right? So anyway.
It requires a plan first.
So these are the things that we're going to work towards, but whether or not, I think this is good in terms of our discussion today, and to this end, what I liked is, you know, we got something from you guys that took a lot of time and effort, and we want to see something a little different to the next round. Hopefully, in a couple of weeks, we can do that. It takes a little bit more...
We're going to suggest, because I'm away next week. There's no way to prep, no effect packet.
So the first October meeting.
Well, or if we can have a workshop, which is dedicated to the plan, long-term plan, so we can really hash this out.
And just take it out of the board meeting?
Can you get us what we talked about tonight before we schedule that meeting?
I think we just... Since a lot of it's falling on him, I...
I think we scheduled a meeting, so he has a date to work with.
We probably start producing some of it, but it won't be complete, it won't be all.
Yeah, if you want to send a format to like Justin and I.
We can meet up and talk about it.
Right, yeah, just, hey, this is what I'm thinking, I put two things in it. What do you guys think about this as a format? Can I move forward and build it out?
Again, I would suggest, you know, if it would streamline things for you guys to create this format, send it my way, I can fill in all this data.
That's fine.
That would be the simplest solution to this.
Yeah, I can send you something. I was going to reach out tomorrow anyway. We can just, just a list of assets and lifetimes, and I'll send it to Dorothy. You want to do that?
Yep, sure.
Yeah, and it'll save...
Okay, we're making progress.
Yeah, I mean, just give it to you streamlined.
Yeah, and then you know exactly what we want, and you fill in the numbers.
So we're making progress, might be a little painful now, but it's going to be good when it's done.
Honestly, I mean, yeah, hopefully this time next year.
Right, we've been begging for this for a while, so...
That's okay, we're moving.
Figure out how to get it done.
It's good.
Okay, I am going to request that we move the minutes to later on in the meeting and deal with them, or if I don't want. And begin with the non-municipal use permit.
Sure.
Can I make a, can I say something before, why are we doing this again?
Because you have to pass a local law to not do it. Until you do that, you have to do it.
So are you guys interested in us developing a local law so that these non-municipal permits can be evaluated and approved by zoning and planning, so that we're not spending time doing these permits annually?
I think that's the next step then, would be for the board to vote to request that our attorney draft language that would then be sent to us for review and to age, and then we would look it over and determine the changes we need to make to it, and decide whether to move it to public hearing. So that is the process, and so it's up to the board when they would like to begin that process. If they'd like to begin it tonight, then I'm just waiting for direction from the board.
I'll just point out that these are your streets and sidewalks. This is in the streets and sidewalks.
So this is trustee-ish.
Well, it doesn't have to be. You can make whatever you want. They are your streets and sidewalks. If that makes a difference to you.
What is, I'm sorry, I don't understand what that means.
Well, the other ones are control.
The trustees.
Control.
Streets and sidewalks.
They're our responsibility as trustees.
I have a question for the board. Is it reasonable to have the board approve the very first one, and any subsequent application of the same activity or event?
The annuals.
Then roll either to the code enforcement officer, barring any complaints presented or provided by the public, otherwise, and it has to come back to the board. So if there's no complaints for any specific event that we've approved once, any subsequent application, should it have been previously approved identically? Right, that Steve could essentially rubber stamp it, but if any complaints were received, it has to come back to us, or if anything is changed by the applicant, it has to come back to us. This keeps it in our lap, right, as streets and sidewalks, but it removes the persistency of things that we know that we like and we want to engage with. I would also suggest that we reserve the right to rescind any previously approved application or Steve's right of any particular activity. We have the ability to rescind that for subsequent approval, should we deem inappropriate for no reason or no cause.
Jeff, did you understand what the board is requesting now?
You said you don't want to do what you want.
I can't do that again.
So we've got the approvers from the lead board, subsequent reviews.
To be done by the building inspector, code enforcement officer.
All subsequent reviews, code enforcement officer, unless a complaint was received.
Or there was a significant difference.
Or a change in the application. We could say material change in the application.
Or complaint.
As determined by the code enforcement officer. As determined by the code enforcement officer.
What I could do is bring it back to where the changer or the issue, bring it back to my report. I have a picture of that.
Yeah, you could present it to us and we just say, yeah, that's fine, right? But I think what we do is we give you the ability to determine if it's material. And then you can, you know, we can always argue your opinion. If we chose to do so, we can challenge it. But as long as you're considering nominal changes, like why wouldn't you?
Can't change those law. So that the trustees challenge a CEO's decision, let's kind of go to the CEO.
Okay, so we can still do that, right?
I just want to point out, I have a local law we draw, drew up for this like eight years ago.
Oh, what happened to it?
With it, it was decided not to move forward because the trustees wanted to have all the applications continue to come in front of them.
We did.
So I can forward that to Jeff.
Okay.
We give you at least a time.
We'll look at that again.
Yeah.
It was because of liability and responsibility, as Jeff said about this, that's streets, sidewalks and streets being on our jurisdiction, so.
And there was something about the board interceding. When you felt it necessary.
Question for you. If we have all subsequent applications that are similar in likeness, go to the code enforcement officer, could we reserve the right to rescind that at any time without pause?
Yeah, you have, we need to send it to a local law.
Great. So can we incorporate that into?
No need to.
Oh, okay.
We're just doing the local laws and changing the process.
Oh, no, I'm not talking about changing the process. I'm just saying for a specific event, if there's a specific event that we've granted approval for, and we choose not to grant approval in a subsequent year, but we, through this law, we've given Steve, the code enforcement officer, the ability to rubber stamp it, could we rescind that right on a subsequent application, if so determined by the board?
Yeah, we just have to figure out how you do it, but Robert Sampson, I agree with it. You know, he's going to review the records. And then if, I'm not sure how the board is going to understand that the application is coming in again.
I think Steve could make a report in his report.
In his report.
And his report saying he approved the following.
I bring others. Yeah. Also to approve.
Embedded in the code where we're granting this authority, embedded in the code, requirement for the code enforcement officer to provide knowledge of a subsequent approval.
Right. And in your report, if you can just put it under like it's a little paragraph, non-municipal. And then just list it, yeah.
Refer, you know, subsequent permit for the Chabad, you know.
I think it would be better for the public if in your review, you're authorizing these events, that we include them in the agenda of the meeting that you've subsequently approved them. So if we do, for example, the Chabad menorah lighting, and then next year you can review it and ensure it's similar and approve it again, then in the very next board meeting, it's part of your list of what you did. But then you include the application for members of the public to know what's going on and to be able to continue to consider it year over year. That seems to make sense.
Yeah, Steve, you guys hang.
Yeah, 100%. And it's nothing different than what you're doing already when these things come in.
Right.
I would think we would want to have him advise you that happened prior to. And then after he's advised you, there's no action taken by the board, he just goes ahead in his builder report.
Okay, so then essentially notify the board of an upcoming subsequent application, non-municipal use permit, in advance of the final determination of approval. That makes sense. And you, what's the time period by which somebody needs to do this?
40 days, 45 days.
45 days?
We waive it all the time.
Library is the 14th.
Yeah, we waive it all the time. I don't, I can't tell you the last time.
So you're not going to have the ability to waive it?
No, I don't think I, I mean, I don't know legally.
Right.
Either separation, though, because if it's within that 45 days, then Steve can't.
Maybe it comes to the trustees, it's inside 45 days.
But that's, that could help us because almost everyone that I've seen so far is.
Oh, you know, actually, though, it'd be a lot easier. Steve would come forward, I've received an application, it's a non-municipal use, it's identical to last year, though they're within the 45 days. At that time, we just make a motion to approve based on waiver of 45 days. You then have what you need. You can forward if you want to.
Yeah, but I think that's going to save them time. I mean, that's not going to save them time. I mean, it's still going to come in front of us. It's still going to take up time on the agenda for us to have to hear it.
So there may be nowhere around that.
Well, unless we change the 45 days. Is the 45 days something that we can adjust?
Do you? Wait, I've got it. For any subsequent application that's not materially different than a prior one, there's a.
Automatic waiver.
Automatic waiver of 45 days.
Yeah.
Right?
Sure.
Even if it's up to, I think, 100% of the light of 45 days is.
Supposedly Steve, he likes it. He says, no way.
Well, how much time would it reasonably take for you to do a subsequent approval? Two weeks?
Not even.
But do we really want somebody coming in here last minute and saying, I got an event tomorrow?
Ask Dorothy, they do it all the time.
They do it all the time.
They do it all the time.
We can't, you know, I mean, it's, I think, community relationships.
They can ask, they just.
You want 15 days? Why don't we put 15 days?
No, I think that's still too much. I say a week.
I just say you can waive the 45 days. I mean.
Okay.
The 45 days is waived for subsequent applications.
Yes, that's what I said.
Can we grant Steve the authority to waive the 45 days?
No need to, we're going to.
We're going to do it.
Just get rid of it altogether. Do you guys like that?
For subsequent.
I'm not sure. I have to think about that because what you're doing is you're transferring powers that belong with the trustees to the C O E. So I'd like to examine that first.
Yeah.
Before I agree that that would be the process.
Yep.
I feel it would.
While the whole process is waiving to, or ceding to the CEO powers of the board of trustees that we've had. So that's really what you want me to think of.
That's, that's, it's a thought.
But it's something that's been approved and evaluated before by us.
Subsequent prior approval.
Same one.
The goal is to shorten our meetings. My suggestion is we find other options for shortening the meetings.
It's not to shorten meetings, it's to spend our time on something that's really important that we need attention. This is, these things that happen every year that never change are things that I don't think that we need to spend our time on. I mean, we've got other things, really important stuff, that we need to spend our time on. I don't think the Chabad thing that happens every single year is something that we, that Steve can't handle.
Most municipalities process that those items, I mean, that's in the administrative area, they don't go to the board.
I like seeing it the first time.
Everywhere I remember working.
Me too. I want to see it the first time. Absolutely. If it's something new, I need to see it and look at it. But if it happens unchanged every year.
Yep. I also like, Jeff, you'd commented that Steve would have to present it to us prior to his final review and approval. So if in that instance, we found objection to it for any reason, we could rescind that right.
So in tonight's report, he would have said, I have a pending application for a library starting the 14th. And if no trustee says, let's talk about it, and then just rolls out.
That's right. Same with Chabad.
Well, we'll save it. I'm comfortable with doing that as a first step, but I think we need to put it all together, but that's okay.
So I think what Jeff is opposing is that he's going to write language to this effect, and we'll come back to our board and we will discuss it and decide whether to move it to public hearing.
That's why we're going to ask you if you're comfortable with that.
I think so.
Yes.
Just wanted to, I think that while we're talking about the non-municipals, the other one is the short-term retail that we've been reviewing recently. So if we want to consider that the same way.
The partner that wants to try to get that back to the planning board.
Well, you have, according to them.
They can't.
There are code changes that need to be made.
If your code changes are needed, but I don't necessarily agree with that, that's an element.
So short-term retail is, give me an example.
No.
It's just for sale. It's just trees.
Oh, okay. So when they're doing something where they're selling? Okay.
I think that, you know, I think that's a longer discussion because the short-term retail was made because the planning board was going to deny functions that have happened in this village for many, many years. And because zoning changes happened.
Oh, you're talking about the bills?
They were going to bomb out people that have served this community for 11, 13 years.
I remember that meeting.
There's no vehicle for that.
All right.
Well, should we just, should we just start with the non-municipal? And we'll leave the short-term detail for as is right now?
Yep. Thanks, Steve.
Okay.
Dorothy, you're going to set this up?
I'll be happy to send you that.
Thank you. I appreciate that, guys.
All right, good work, everybody. You need a motion or is this?
So may we proceed with the non-municipal use permit for Chabad of Pittsburgh's menorah lighting, which will be the 10th of December at the Four Corners. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve as presented.
Hold on, I have got a question. Where do you see this at the Four Corners? Is it written in here anywhere?
Where do I see?
The library.
Annual Pittsburgh community menorah lighting. In the library parking lot.
Oh, in the library parking lot. They moved it.
Okay, so it's in the library parking lot?
Okay.
So that constitutes that we have to come back to us?
So they moved it.
Okay, so that's important to note. In the library parking lot. And then time?
So that would be a change. So we'll go right back to, okay, that would have been a change.
So that would have been a change, okay.
I would want to come back to that. We might have, wish to have a discussion right now regarding that change and have some questions about traffic control, parking.
That's a huge change to me.
Yep.
Because that's a change.
This is, I think, because I think they have.
They do, but are they going to have the menorah in the parking lot and do the lighting? Or they usually have their event in the library, pre-manorah lighting. Sometimes they have a little thing, and then you go up for the menorah lighting, and then you go back to the library typically for.
Yeah, I think, I think what happened, and I'm going to guess that we table it for this meeting, we'll go back to the Chabad and ask them directly because it always ends up at the Four Corners. So I can't see them lighting it at the library and then moving it back to the Four Corners. It might not be accessible.
Yeah, and I was going to say, this just doesn't give me an idea of anything about this.
No, he knows it so quick, so.
So we need, I need to know what this is.
Okay, so we need more.
I'll reach out for more details.
Timing, how they plan on using the parking lot.
Perfect. Okay, thank you, Jeff. The next one would be Friends of Pittsburgh library sale.
Yep. This is really just for the banner.
Okay. Do I have a motion regarding the Pittsburgh library book sale?
I'll make a motion to approve the banner for the Pittsburgh library book sale. Do I have a second?
Second. We need to waive the 45-day arrangement for this. First one will be September 4th. We're going to amend your motion to waive the 45 days.
Oh, I think.
Yeah, we have to waive the 45, I'll amend it to waive the 45-day answer.
Do I have a second to that?
I have a second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Lickett?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Lanier?
Aye.
Motion passes. We'll clear out the Chabad.
Could I just add briefly?
Thank you.
Steve, would it be possible in that law you're crafting to embed a requirement for the code enforcement officer to express any material differences, or is that already in there?
We have, it's been in. Oh, so many reports for the board?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just something that.
To state if there's a difference.
Because, whatever. Not that you're going to be here three years from now, right? So we. Couldn't say next year. Like, that would have been weird.
Was our public hearing set for 6:30 or 7 o'clock?
6 o'clock.
6 o'clock?
Yes, we.
Were we optimistic?
Well, we moved it because we figured would be early start time.
Yeah.
That we'd get out earlier.
All right.
So it's okay. You can, you can always start a public hearing after the time you can start prior. So it's okay. Bye.
All right.
It's all good.
Okay, I will make a motion that we, first of all, let's start at the beginning. Do the trustees have any questions regarding the local law, the proposal that was sent by the attorney? We have had, it's staged and we have one week to consider it, which we all did. So now we will be bringing the proposed local law to a public hearing, at which time we will, we will accept a public comment regarding this proposed local law, which is local law. Do we have a number on it yet?
No, actually, this is the public hearing for the local law.
Yeah. So I have to open the public hearing?
You had it right, right from go.
Yeah, okay. So I was doing an introduction to the opening.
There you go.
You're informing us.
Okay. Workup. Okay. So at this time, I will make a motion that we open the public hearing for the purpose of hearing, as again, a law proposing to amend sections 105-16 of the code and amending section 112-4 of the code of the Village of Pittsburgh, adding section 112-11 to the code of the Village of Pittsburgh, and amending section 210-14 of the code of the Village of Pittsburgh, and amending section 210-19 of the Village of Pittsburgh. Do I have a second?
I second.
Okay, and with that, the public hearing is open.
Trustee Marshall?
Yes.
Trustee Coe?
Yes.
Trustee Lickett?
Aye.
Trustee Lanier?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Do the trustees have any further comments regarding them?
Procedural question. We're opening a public hearing for all of these amendments. However, it contains laws that are different in kinds, some relating to fees and some relating to appointed boards. I, my understanding of those is that we could vote on these separately. Is that?
I don't think so. You can add them together.
Well, could we? I would prefer to vote on them separately.
It's all one local law.
So it's currently crafted as one local law, and that's how it's aged.
I guess my understanding when we submitted this is that since they were distinct in kind, they would be submitted separately.
Specifically to fee schedule.
Right.
Well, the fee schedule is not part of this local law.
No.
Section 105-16.
You establish the fee schedule. We're not establishing the fee schedule of a local law.
Yeah, this is just wording.
It's just related to fees. It's not giving numbers here.
Okay. So this is, mostly it's wording.
You know, I have a subsequent, so I have two comments. I guess, let me back up and say, so we have a public hearing on this. Is there any members of, should we ask for members of the public input?
That's what I'm about to ask, but I'm asking the trustees first.
I'll wait.
You wait?
I'll wait.
I'll wait.
Okay, do we have anybody who is online wanting to speak?
I have a couple of people online. A hand is raised, so hold on here. Ms. Carabares, you're free to speak.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I have a couple of comments and a couple of questions. First of all, I was a little confused about the way the fee scheduler, the fee schedule and the related to membership on the, of the two committees or the two boards was laid out. And I guess I feel like if one piece of this doesn't, doesn't forward, does that mean the whole thing doesn't move forward? That's one of my questions.
I know, I see that I sent this out, and I didn't receive any comment. So if the board wishes me to break this out into different local laws, and we can do that, then it will be published and we'll go forward.
It would have to age again? Yeah.
But this will be weak. Wouldn't take me long to break it out. But if you strike out bits of this local law, it's less restrictive and you have the opportunity to do that.
Okay.
So if you are uncomfortable with the fee schedule change, you could just strike it out and that's the rest.
I.
How long is your weighted scans? This is not establishing a fee schedule. It's establishing your right.
To establish.
To establish a fee schedule.
And actually, amend's a right that already exists.
Correct.
Yeah. Hey, you might have more.
Did you have further questions?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Secondly, I read the proposed law, and it seems to me that there should be a reason for having to appoint someone from the town to either committee, either board. In my, in my background with historic preservation and with Jeff and I kind of crafting the current preservation code, the model code actually lays out the fact that what we would like to have on the preservation board are people that may be architects or. on the preservation board are people that may be architects or engineers or someone who might bring some skill to the table. Um, and that, in that way, I think that was one of the reasons that people were designated from, um, the town because they brought some, um, knowledge to the table that the preservation board needed to have. Uh, but none, there's no reason given for appointing someone from the town to our village boards. So my feeling is that there should be a reason put in there, other, otherwise, you know, maybe say something like, because of a dearth of volunteers or because of a dearth of expertise, blah, blah, anyway. And my, my feeling is that we really don't need any town members on our, our municipal boards because they aren't vested in the village in any way, unless, I know originally Susan Loda was put on the planning board, but, but she had a business in the village. She lived in the town, but she had a business in the village, so she was vested in, in, uh, you know, the, the, the characteristics and personality of the village. Anyway, I'm, I'm opposed to putting town members on our village boards unless there's some defined reason for doing that. then maybe there should be something in the preservation code about that, Jeff, as I look back on it. Because we do need, you know, particular expertise, not to say that the people on the board aren't doing a good job, but, um, anyway, you know what I'm saying. So I'm opposed to, uh, putting town members on our boards unless there's a really good reason. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to speak? Did we receive any phone calls or emails?
Nope.
No?
Nope.
Okay, okay. Now, well, that changed conversation from the trustees. It's obvious, I have that very good question now.
I do have just a couple of quick updates. So this is an up-down road on the whole law, unless we want to amend it, age it, and come back within a week. To Peggy's comment, the 112-4B, which is the subsequent section to what's referenced here for the HPB, does state as a separate item, so this is a, next one is B. It says qualifications of board members. Board members shall have interest, experience, and training in historic preservation and planning as determined by the mayor and board of trustees. So there are qualification prerequisites that are embedded. It is an "and," it's not a "for," so the interest, experience, and training. The challenge, of course, is it's as determined by the mayor or the board of trustees. And I think we spoke on our last board meeting, how regardless of what you may put in there, it's very much subjective. So the challenge is, is anything that you introduce, um, as a subjective thing, the board members could at any time make a different decision, and that maybe there's no experience, and could vote somebody in. And so one of the things that we were talking about last time, and this kind of moves on, is that question, Jeff, about leadership and board chair. Is it true that once a member of either board, this board couldn't restrict the chair position to solely be a village resident? And they would have to be, or could be, either the village or the town?
If you can restrict it to village?
You could restrict it to village.
Okay.
And my follow-up question is, is it also possible, if we move to adopt this code, we could, in a subsequent meeting, adopt a code that is more restrictive, either of leadership or chair positions, or to move towards a five-member village resident-only board?
Sure.
So, in essence, what we see in front of us, if we want to move other items forward as quick as possible, we could approve it and then come back.
Yeah, there's something in the code somewhere about the chairs unavailable. I think the members of the board select to chair the meeting or something like that.
Yeah, it's in fact, in the absence of an aoral appointment, the chair selects their own chair, or the board selects their own chair. Um, I, I was just going to add in one other possibility with the code. So certainly we could adopt the whole thing as it is. We could also republish it as separate parts and, and set it up again for public hearing. Or we can make it less restrictive, so we could adopt only a part of this, so that could be the part about the fees or the part about the boards. And that is the option that personally I would go with, at least as, as far as my own opinion at this point. I don't think that the restriction about the HPB, um, uh, membership goes far enough. I, I feel that we should be all village boards based on the number of people who have applied, so I would not be in support of that clause. I don't see any problem with language changes regarding fees. So I would, since we are voting on this as a parcel, I would vote on a less restrictive form that includes the provisions about fees and postpones, um, the language about the appointed board for, um, subsequent consideration.
And which section are you talking about that you would want to move out?
I think it's 4.8.1.
So you could strike that, and we could come back for re-discussions, should we choose to do so.
On the board appointment piece?
Yes, which essentially means it remains as is until a subsequent decision or...
But the other things we move for?
The other things we move for.
So you have two members, you know, you have a restriction, right now, it will be that way.
Right.
I have a question. I received emails, copied them, that were sent to village hall from people who commented to me about their positions, and I asked them to contact village hall, which they did, and they copied me in.
Who did they send it to?
The village clerk.
I did not receive those.
I mean, I didn't, I don't want to do names in public, but I, I can give you names of people who did.
And to desire to be on them, to be considered for a board, is that what you're saying?
They had opinions regarding...
Oh, they had opinions regarding you.
Yes.
Okay.
And when they were directed to me, I directed them to contact village hall, and, uh, they subsequently sent me an email demonstrating that they had done that and copied me in.
I don't know when that happened, but I will tell you, if it went to village clerk, it was not received.
Okay, well, then from, that's one of my reasons. I, I agree with Justin that I would, um, I would adopt, wish to adopt the, our right to establish a fee schedule, but I would, um, prefer not to, um, address the village board residency requirement.
Right.
Um, because I, frankly, I would be inclined to vote against it. So, um, I'm basing this on input that I received from residents. So, um, that's where I stand, so you understand where I am.
Yeah, no, this is it.
Yeah, I, I'd like to make a comment. Uh, I also had put a couple postings up on my Facebook page, and I did get responses from residents, and it pretty much was an overall, residents want all members, all members of the board to be village residents. I don't think I had anybody supporting to have one person in town. So the park constituents, our residents, we really do want all board members to be village residents. That's what I found in my postings.
So last week, or last month, we had the, uh, the motion to move this forward to four or five. And to a degree, I think it was, for me anyway, looking at the board's ability to say no if we wanted to treat a town resident. The challenge of that is, is we're at the mercy of the appointments of the mayor, whoever the mayor may be at any given time. So should there be a persistency of only ever appointing a town person to that, this spot, you'll never actually...
Get anybody in there.
Get anybody in there if they so choose to, who is a member of the village. And so while I agree in some contexts that the town and the village, and we're all local residents in, in a community that I hope has similar and shared goals, the reality is, is we are a government entity of a village, not of a village plus town. So I think this, the additional comment is, um, I, like you, we've seen the last three weeks of any conversation I've had, pretty much everybody, um, it's easier for them to understand why everybody should be in the village than it is for everybody to, to give the authority for somebody to be outside the town. That was the part that needed to be more explained or discussed, whereas the other was sort of the default, yeah, that makes sense. So, and I did, to close, with a, with what we had considered last time and where we are now, this isn't going to move forward if we were to include it. So let's just extract it and pass it, pass the rest, I think.
So, um, do you understand what the, what the board is requesting, Jeff? And so the motion should be, and I want to make sure the motion is phrased correctly?
First of all, are you closing the public hearing?
Okay. Okay, before we start that part, okay. I will make a motion that we close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
I second.
Trustee Liken?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Lanier?
Aye.
There is an alternative, I should've said this about thirty seconds ago.
Okay.
But could have kept the public hearing open, and we drafted this into the quiet.
What's the difference?
No difference.
Okay, well, we closed it, so let's just move forward.
Yeah, I think you're at the same age as the public hearing.
Let's just move forward and...
You're at the same age, or it was published.
So you want us to reopen the public hearing and then...
Well, no, I, I won't tell you that it's an option. I'm, I'm telling you what to do, I'm just telling you it's an option.
Okay.
Okay.
So let's, I'll make a motion to adopt the local law with the, uh, with striking out the section related to 112-4.a., parentheses one, excepting all other provisions as drafted.
Is there any discussion? I want to make certain that, I'm doing it the opposite way, that the section is 105-16 fees, section 112-4a is not in it.
Right.
So this is not considered.
Right.
But section 112-11 fee schedule is.
Okay.
So we are adopting section 105-16, section 112-11 fee schedule.
And next page, reference?
210-14.1.
That's just changing the name?
Type.
Oh, okay, to the, all right, and then?
And then 210.
We need to do that, too, 210-14?
210-19.5.
Okay, that's one check. All right, so we have those?
Correct, yes. So that is the motion.
So the motion on the table?
With a second.
With a second, from me.
Trustee Coe.
All right, Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Liken?
Aye.
Trustee Lanier?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for going through that.
I, I just wanted to, um, on, on the same topic, since we did discuss opinions on the, the board constitution, is there the desire to direct our attorney to draft language to have village-only appointed boards?
Yes.
Is that a motion?
No, obviously not a motion.
This is a directive.
We generally haven't given, made motions to draft our...
I would agree with that.
I would, I would like that, yes, please.
Good. Okay, so number three is friends.
Oh, your only friend? Where's your friend?
Further friends.
And that's your quick made note accomplished. Jim White was eleven, he strips and circle on the edge of the plans of the arboretum. And I, I do know we have a more extensive set of requests to bring probably back on the twenty-sixth. Tonight was this seeking some permission on one of the new trails in the arboretum. One that noted this having cardboard as the first stage of developing and activating that trail, getting permission to add some wood chips, which are actually, I guess, on hand around the D E facilities, and be able to use those and spread on top of the cardboard and pursue that scale more.
So mulch, the mulch pile?
Leaf mulch, or...
Yeah.
I should've just said that.
We do have that in books.
The mulch pile.
Uh, we do have lots of, uh...
Leaf mulch.
That is now arboretum.
I, I think you're talking about the leaf mulch, right?
Well, yeah.
Okay, so my understanding is that we laid the cardboard to kill the poison ivy?
Right, so...
Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, so you want to put the leaf mulch on top of the cardboard so that people can start walking the trails or...
Well, I think it's, it's going to make it, it, it's just going to start to build up the base of a trail.
And we'll leave the cardboard underneath the trail for her?
Right, that stays down, that was the intent, they want that just stays down, and Mother Nature takes care of that.
Okay.
We're trying to move it along in that progression. And, uh, of course, the leaves will start dropping soon as well.
So is this the same trail that Steve has cited as the...
No.
Okay. All right, so this is...
No, that, that one is, is under further development, so that everybody can agree on that, so...
So you're just, you're just asking for, for you to be able to spread that leaf mulch on top of the cardboard?
I have a question. Would the friends be moving the mulch? Would you, you be physically taking the mulch and putting it on the trail?
Yes, we're anticipating that we'll work with our volunteers to do that. We may be asking if it's possible to have it mechanically moved to a safe, uh, trail end area just to get it, can't really get the mulch closer than the... Well, yeah, all right, I, I guess, I'll circle this.
No. Do you, do you guys need a motion? Do you need a motion to...
Yeah, we need a motion, and as long as we have any further questions.
Yes, I need...
Yeah, do you have any problems? Just anything?
Sorry about that.
That you need to know about?
No.
No?
All right.
I'll make a motion to permit using leaf mulch to cover the hardwood trail.
I second.
Trustee Liken?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Lanier?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Move that mulch.
All right, thank you very much.
And by the way, of course, you want those volunteers to move.
When, when are you doing it?
I just have one question, this is fairly simple. So while you're working on these other things, and I don't know how the path forward is with friends, but, you know, I, I really love the effort and the contributions that you guys have had together. There are times, things that, as far as where we go with them, like the Atlantis removal, that we may want to suggest, hey, can we focus on other things for a little while so we can maybe have a professional come in and figure out what the right thing to do is? If you're not bringing forward an action item like you did tonight, are there no other action items occurring between now and our next meeting?
No, there are, I, I'm not seeing anything else that's happening.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
I think we're, we're trying to make sure we have, as you just made your motion.
Yeah.
Um, until that's happened, then no, we shouldn't be doing anything on that.
Okay, so I, I like that path forward because it allows us to, for a specific action, let's do this. Like with the trail, like, hey, let's go blaze the trail, see if this thing's going to work. And we had a chance to take a look at it, you know, some questions about, but now you guys are moving on to look at something different like this mulch move. So I, I guess my thought is, is, um, next time we get together, if you guys want to go do something different, you're going to, just like now, come forward. And is the weeding of the existing trees that have been planted, that's a persistent thing that you guys can always do, right? I mean, that's just, that's not invasive removal, or that's not trail blazing, that's persistency of the weeding and caretaking of those trees.
Um, yes, but I think we want to make sure we have that understood so that we can freely do that in the future.
Okay, so...
So I, I think that's a part of the order I'm back in the twenty-sixth law, is to get more longer-range things.
Yeah, this is good.
To our...
Because I might, I might like to grant a little bit additional authority beyond just being the meeting, and say for the better, you know, for the remainder of the, this season and in the fall, should you choose to weed the existing trees, so long as you communicate, uh, I don't know, you guys have to communicate with anybody besides this coming here, but if you want to go have work parties or just go up there and care for those trees, you can approve that. I think we've done that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we've done that.
You good? I got multiple hands up.
You want to go?
My recollection is that the board has granted that authority at all limits. However, the condition is they must notify the village office to...
Great.
Okay.
And, and.
Thank you very much, thanks for coming.
I just wanted to bring up one other thing related to the arboretum, too. I'm, I'm concerned that the, it seems like an action taken on the twenty-eighth has completely blocked the, the proposed south trail. And I think that, well, we're all on the same page, that that is not a full trail that is intended to be published and, and readily used by a broad group of people. I, I don't know if the intent was to keep out volunteers and people who might want to do work on it, for example, boy scouts, if we decide to move into that direction in the future. So, I wanted to get the board's thought on that and what your understanding is on this.
Yes, Steve, I'm wondering if the possibility exists that we discuss it on the twenty-sixth when the friends come with their plan, and at that time discuss the possibility of lifting the ban, what else to call, to remove the posting, as long as the trees, the marks on the trees are removed, so that it's not, it's not blazed in a visible way, that frankly, nobody would know it was there unless the trees had not been marked. They were marked with the yellow, and otherwise we wouldn't even, I don't think, turn their head and walk that way. So, we can talk about it that night, and saying if they come in with a plan, Jeff, is this correct, that we can lift?
The concern I'm gonna have with that is that if nothing had been done up there, right? Nothing, nothing at your direct, at your, with your permission, then I've done, I'm fine. But I think once you have given permission for the work to be done, and you're gonna take responsibility for the conditions that have resulted from that work, so that's my concern.
So, we can discuss this on the twenty-sixth, when they bring to board and explain what's, what the purpose is? Okay, great. Okay.
All right.
We ready to move on to the next agenda item, which is a petition for zoning change at Five State Street. And we have a letter in front of us, from the owner of Five State Street, Mike Reynolds. I will entertain comments from the board after having read Mr. Reynolds' letter.
So, is Mr. Reynolds planning to be here tonight?
He knew we were bringing it back to this meeting, I haven't heard from Mr. Reynolds anything, never.
So, my understanding when Mr. Reynolds left last time is he was gonna look into the fact that he didn't need to have a tavern overlay district if he was gonna have a restaurant that served alcohol.
Correct. Correct. He, he was, he was looking for more possibilities.
So, he wants this under his belt, so if somebody came in that wanted to have a bar, he'd be able to do that?
That's what he's looking for, possibilities.
So, he just wants more.
A table, and was like, you know, depending on the outcome of the lawsuit, you know, then changes what, you know, the direction we make.
This is the same letter that we were reading last time. It's no different, and my opinion of the matter stays the same. I don't want to consider rezoning a single-spot property. I recognize the value of the tavern overlay district, but I think it's a broader conversation not specific to one property. So, should we choose to bring it forward, a rediscussion of a tavern overlay district, or restaurant overlay district, or expansion of the TDD, any of those stuff, I think it should be done separate from specific requests of property.
And I also would like to see what happens with the litigation, I mean, why are we pushing this? Why don't we see what happens when that's settled, right?
Yeah.
We have an obligation to do something, there's no time to.
So, then we can choose to deny.
We can choose to deny.
Yeah, all right, well, I believe that the denial should be based on the review criteria for considering changes in zoning, correct? So, if we could spend a few moments just going over some of those.
Yeah.
And this, this section of code is two ten dash thirty-seven dot four.
Yes.
And these are the review criteria for making decisions on zoning amendments. So, I'll just briefly go through some of those. Category, criteria A is whether the proposed zoning amendment corrects an error or inconsistency in the zoning law or needs the challenge of a change in condition. To me, I don't believe that there's an inconsistency, in fact, this would open up an inconsistency because it would be the only handful of property on the other side of the street that would be a tavern overlay district. Agreed.
Okay.
Any other comments?
No.
B is whether the proposed amendment is in substantial conformance with the adopted plans and policies of the village, including the, it's your village comprehensive plan. I didn't find very much in the, in the comprehensive plan that was specifically stated whether one side of, of the, the street is, is in that tavern overlay or not. I do know that we have a sensitivity to noise and disturbances, since we have a lot of commercial districts near residential areas, and I believe that by expanding the intensity of the commercial uses, it may not be consistent with some of the goals of the comprehensive plan. So, I think that more discussion to be garnered before moving this forward on that criteria.
And I would agree with that, and it does not preclude him having a restaurant, so that serves alcohol, I thought. Okay, I would agree with that.
Criteria C is whether.
I, I might just add, I, I wouldn't necessarily say that having a tavern there isn't in conformity with the comprehensive plan, but I don't know if it's substantial, because it's not, it's more indirectly stated as to the goals and objectives of people to have entertaining, you know, opportunities in the village. But again, to your point on these review criteria, we just have to consider them all in the decision, knowing one, just because it's a positive or a negative, we determine the outcome.
The, that would not be only, I guess I would say that would not be the only use that could foster walkability. A restaurant would do the same, a diner would do the same.
That's correct.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Criteria C then is whether the proposed zoning amendment is in the best interest of the municipality as a whole. And I think this goes back to the point that trustee Marshall made, this is not something that has come from the community as a whole, it's come from one individual.
But we'll hear, because it's gonna be open, we're gonna hear from the community.
Well, we will decide.
The, the ask is from an individual.
I believe that's not the point of consideration.
Yes, our quote is based on the community's interest, not the interest of one individual asking how the zoning change to suit what it is that they would like to accomplish.
Right, but, so the ask is from an individual, which is a lot of red color. So, when you are considering C, your consideration is whether or not it's in the best interest of the community, not whether it's been asked by one person.
Okay, whether he brought it up, whether it's.
Yeah, that doesn't matter here, I.
So, I mean, I guess my, my thought on that is that, you know, over and over again, we hear residents wanting businesses filled, and saying we're too restrictive. So, I know residents want buildings filled, so by opening it up to, or giving him more opportunities to go tampering there, that would do that. Not in a for it, I'm just saying that that would satisfy that use.
My comment, I agree, I mean, opportunities to fill buildings. It is a nice retail location with terminals and parking, though it may not ultimately have parking. But a restaurant, or a shop, or other opportunities that one could rent to satisfy the same goal. So, we're not, I, I would just think that the best interest of municipal, municipality as a whole isn't either additive or subtractive to the fact that it's a tavern.
You know, but it does give it more opportunity to be filled. If, if we can't get a restaurant in there, but we have three taverns waiting in line to get in there, and they can't, it does provide us some fillings space.
So, then the prior applicant was not a tavern, it was a cafe that was gonna be closed at three in the afternoon. So, I think there's opportunities to rent a non-tavern.
You make an important distinction, and that is that the state liquor authority oversees the tavern use, bar use, and they set the hours of operation, the village does not.
Right.
So, we have no control over that. When we grant a special use permit, one of the things that we look at are hours of operation, and so it's something that goes into consideration to be sensitive to our residents.
Yeah.
So, to have a tavern district, that's something that we need to take into consideration, we have no control over the hours.
Very good point.
And so, you've got a little, you know, you've got a budding of some residential up there on St. Street, there's proximity, there's things to take into consideration.
We lose control of that. Okay.
Can I, to further comment, the TDD, which I know this is not currently a part of, but there's consideration for expanding the TDD that was presented to us from the planning board some time ago. You know, traditional downtown is thriving, you have shops during the day that are inviting people coming and going, and actually, the density of those sorts of shops aid the experience, right? And so, to the degree that you have shops that are, or taverns or things that are different than that, it doesn't necessarily add to the density of the retail experience.
Retail helps you.
Or the specialty retail, right, retail helps you. Well, but anyway, I do think, I do think additional opportunities is important to consider, which is why I sort of started with the idea that I'd rather consider the tavern overlay as part of a more comprehensive discussion than specific to this.
Are there more criteria?
There are, however, I think we just covered a couple of them, so I'll put a brief comment on some of these. Very briefly then, going on to criteria D, whether the public facilities, infrastructure, and services will be adequate to serve development allowed by the requested rezoning, if applicable. I think we probably would be okay on that, on the roads and bring the traffic there. I think so. Anyway, the only being that if it is a very successful tavern, then you have cross-traffic back and forth on Main Street in off-hours, and there can be relatively quick travel coming from the west side of Monroe over this slight ride. So, there's not a crosswalk there at this time, so I've seen how kids move back and forth over main roads in the evening with alcohol. So, I'm always cautious of that. So, from an infrastructure standpoint, not sure what else could be done, given it's a state road. Moving on to criteria E then, whether the rezoning will substantially harm the public health, safety, or general welfare, or the value of nearby property, if applicable. On this one, one thing that I would like to see is a more informed opinion by the neighbor, sharing the same address, and to my knowledge, we haven't really received a lot of input there, but.
Interesting.
We'd be in a better situation if, if, I think we had a consideration of the rezoning with tavern overlay, rather than considering this impact of the property. Any other comments? Criteria F, whether the rezoning is compatible with the zoning and use of nearby properties, if applicable. I think this goes back to many previous comments, including the one about being the only property in that overlay on the side of the street.
And this is a great opportunity, I think, just to stop and say, we've got a parking lot right now that has zoned the tavern overlay district, right? And it's interesting, because we allow that so that they can serve alcohol on the parking lot, and it grants the town a little bit more flexibility, and possibly, as we bleed down into carpenter park even. The question is, and this has a lot to do with urban planning, or, you know, planning in general, the idea is, is that over time, parking lots you actually want to disappear, and they become opportunities for redevelopment and redevelopment. And when you think about where you want taverns, in the end, this keeps them on similar sides of the street and allows for density. So, in a way, perhaps it wasn't because of this, but we've got a good amount of tavern district right now that is not being used as tavern. And if the demand was high enough to suggest we needed more taverns, there's opportunities to put in more taverns, maybe not in the parking lot, you know, of the town. But the question is, is if we do grant this specific permit, are we suggesting that we don't have enough space for taverns? The answer to that's probably not.
Okay.
Criteria G is the suitability of the subject property for the uses and development to which it has been restricted under the existing zoning regulations, if applicable. So, how, how does it do in, in the current zones that apply to it before we change things? And are those inadequate in some way? I would say no, it's just by choice, they'd like to have the tavern flexibility, not by necessity.
Right, not to, he can't get, that's the difference is, you serve food. The difference with a bar is food is not required.
Right.
And so, that's the difference, that he is able, for all intents and purposes, to put in a business that, similar to places that are on Main Street already, like that they serve alcohol and.
Jojos, for example, or the pub, those aren't in the tavern district, right? Those are restaurants that serve alcohol.
They are.
They are. Sorry, I just wanted to stand up.
If someone wanted to open a tavern.
Yeah.
They could, by going to any of those buildings on the opposite side, all the way there.
Yeah, but for example.
Is Jojos a tavern?
It's a restaurant, but it's a restaurant.
Yeah, so it's not, yeah.
And here's the pub, that's a restaurant.
Yeah.
Yes, the pub's a restaurant.
The argument being that we have successful businesses in town that are restaurants and serve alcohol, and stay open reasonably late.
Exactly.
Right.
But we're able to say, you need to close at two o'clock.
Sure.
We don't have that, we don't have that, it was just a tavern. Like we, either they request that they, or require that they close at eleven. We felt it was in the best interest of the, of the nation, first season, we don't have that, we don't have that with.
Yeah, so let me back up and just reiterate, so if a tavern overlay, and Jeff, this is a little bit to you to just reaffirm exactly what Lily's saying, because somehow I like to hear it multiple times, if it's in the tavern overlay district, we do not have the authority to determine when they close.
That's correct.
If, if they are a tavern, it does not have to food, serve food, and we have no way to control their hours of operation. It's the control of the food service operation that gets us to zoning.
Okay, thank you. This is the last criteria then, thank you for your patience. The gain, if any, to the public health, safety, and wealth, and general welfare due to the denial of the application, as compared to the hardship imposed upon the landowner, if any, as a result of denial of the application. So, balancing the, what the applicant would gain by rezoning versus the detriment to the health and welfare of the public. I just, my initial thought on this one is that we, we do have a specific segmentation of the tavern overlay district, which follows a very common sense boundary, which is State Street right there, and that's been done because, as the comprehensive plan states, the, the village is a small area where there are residences in close proximity with business uses, and therefore, the, the zones are carefully drawn to avoid the, any negative impacts of those uses. And I think that by having a clear delineation of the tavern overlay district that stays on one side of the street and doesn't creep toward the other, perhaps for parceling, I think we maintain those distinctions.
And the hardship is kind of speculative.
Yeah, I agree with that. The property has been filled for quite a good time.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so the question is, would the board prefer to table the petition, to deny the petition?
You don't have to have an open.
I'll move to deny.
Don't have to have.
We don't have to move it to a public hearing.
Oh, we don't, I thought it was.
That's our decision.
Oh, I thought it was already.
We have a petition, and we can, we can.
Deny without prejudice.
Deny based on the criteria we just reviewed.
So, let's put it out to vote, then.
We can deny without prejudice.
Without public hearing.
So, are we to have a proposal?
That's my motion, is to deny the application. I'll second that.
Wait a second. Thank you. We'll call.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Liken?
Aye.
Motion yes.
Thank you very much for that. Next is the appointment, and I, I find I have a question to start out the discussion with the appointment, or the planning of, to the planning of zoning board. Is the appointment a placement for a non.
I think there are.
Unsecured term, or is this something that has been languishing and?
I think it's an, I think it's an empty spot we've had on the planning of zoning for the alternates, we only had one.
The reason I ask is because, does this require, my question is, does it require board approval, or is this a mayoral appointment?
No, it requires board.
Okay.
I thought any mayoral appointment requires board approval.
No.
No, oh, not, not destroying this, that's, okay, yeah, I got it.
In other words, there are instances, circumstances, in which the mayor may make an appointment without the board's approval.
Yes, that's right.
It's simply a mayoral appointment. And so, my question is, somebody leaving board before their term was up, and then this individual was being placed in that position, and therefore, our board would not need to vote.
So, this is an alternate position, it's been there?
It's been there, it's been vacant, we haven't found the person for it.
Okay.
So we now have a person for it.
And this person is a village resident?
Yes.
I think it's Jefferson Road.
Jefferson.
Yeah. Well, just we got to read this.
So as it is right now, we have two alternates that can exist. And we only have one being Mike Reynolds.
Correct, so we're just filling in the one vacant.
Yeah.
So I'd like to make a motion. So he would be alternate number two. Sorry, excuse me for interrupting, but there is a differentiation so that when there is a vacancy on the, at the meeting, the chairperson puts the first alternate in, that there is a.
I understand that's true.
I think I read that. Their question arose once before when there were two alternates. It's, and I believe one of, the alternate wrote in and asked a question, the president of alternate, and said, what is the protocol? And the protocol is that the person with seniority, who had been the alternate over years, was.
Yeah, very close, very close. The line is in 93C. And it says, if the village board.
What section?
And it says, if the village board of trustees designates multiple alternates to any board, it will designate a first alternate, second alternate, et cetera, and such alternates shall serve in that order. So if the village board of trustees designates multiple alternates, so it shall, meaning the village board shall.
Yeah, that's, it's not a pointable, it's not a pointable call.
It's correct. So what I'm saying is, should we have had, should we have these alternates labeled? So should we have Mike Reynolds labeled as one and this person would be labeled as two?
Yes, they would, the chair would, if there's, if someone's going to be vacant, they would call Mike Reynolds first.
Okay.
If he can't serve, then they would call.
Number two, so he's, he's coming as number two.
In fact, it's slightly different. So we would.
Make the motion.
Mr. Wilkins has a very nice resume, seems to be a very experienced professional who I think quickly has some nice targets to the planning board, is here in the village. So should we choose to appoint him? We would then make a subsequent motion to appoint a first alternate and a second alternate. We would make that motion as a board. Because according to this 93C, it says, if the village board of trustees designates multiple alternates to any board, which we would have done if we appoint this person, it will designate, the village board will, it will designate a first alternate, second alternate, et cetera. So we get that determination. And to the tradition, I would say we designate the first alternate to the one who's been in the property.
Okay, so that this has two motions?
So it'd be two motions in my view, and Jeff, do you?
You can do the other one.
Okay. I just have a, procedurally, it seems that the, in the absence of the mayor, the deputy mayor has the power to appoint.
Not directly.
No, that's right.
Because you run into these subsequent appointments. So is she, is she appointed this person?
No.
Okay.
No, this is.
This is a courtesy advisement.
No.
Oh, so she has, so this is not coming from the mayor? The mayor didn't.
No, the mayor is requesting approval of this appointment.
So she's appointed.
So she's appointed, okay.
She's appointed her subject.
And asking for approval?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. The appointment doesn't have to be public, she can just appoint that person and then we can.
Yes.
All right, so it doesn't have to be a public appointment because there's no motion to actually grant the approval, it's just the motion to grant the approval of the appointment.
Right, right.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense. Right, so if the president appoints, if the president appoints a Supreme Court justice, then it goes for approval. And if it's never approved, they never actually do anything, they just get booted. So in this instance, she's.
She's requesting approval of this appointment.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion to approve David Wilks as an alternate for the PZBA. So I have a second.
I'll second.
We'll call.
Trustee Marshall?
Hi.
Trustee Phil?
Hi.
Trustee Licken?
Hi.
Trustee Wicker?
Hi.
Motion passed.
And then make a subsequent motion?
I'll make a subsequent motion that we designate the first alternate to be Mike Reynolds and the second alternate to be David Wilks. Done so, well, I don't have to say why. So we'll just designate the first as Mike Reynolds and the second as David Wilks to serve in that order.
I second. We'll call please.
Trustee Licken?
Hi.
Trustee Phil?
Hi.
Trustee Marshall?
Hi.
Trustee Wicker?
Hi.
Motion passed.
Okay, thanks. Congratulations, David, and we appreciate your volunteering, your stuff and all.
Sure, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. The next is the authorization for the mayor to sign the amended canal permit. Which we have in front of us.
I have comments, or anybody want to go first?
You can leave it off if you'd like to. Justin Go, happy to.
No.
Justin, there. So I think this is good in many respects. But the challenge that I have with it is, there was no mention as to the canal path coming into the arboretum on the land to the left that would be at some point potentially connected to the canal, however that may so be done. And so as I look at this, I think it's incomplete. I think the uses are, as spoken under the general permit conditions, I would need to approve this only with the additional statement of use being accessed to, or the condition that it would allow for, should we approve it subsequently. But I want the immediate New York state approval to move in that direction, to have a path into the arboretum using the, that land. Because without it, we have to go back and get it done again. And I'd rather frankly just deny this, get it done correctly, and then approve it once. So.
So then we got that advantage.
So under section one of the real estate permit, and if you go through all this language, it basically says you can use all this for all these things, which are significant in many respects. And I think for me.
Can I stop you for a second?
Yeah.
Take a look at the letter.
Okay.
On this 23rd, 2023.
All right.
And David, I'll try it.
Got it?
That whole type 1234th.
Yeah.
Will be what the permit actually says.
Correct. And that is what, and that is the same line embedded in the real estate permit under subheading one, just gotten past it.
But so, there's a couple of things going on here. One is that we have to see this, I am firing this budget because they're not going to run and do anything until we accept this permit. The second is, this permit blesses the current DPW recroachments on canal property. It does not exclude you from applying for the amendment you wish later. Because when you do the amendment that you are looking for, the canal will want a layout where that, exactly where that path is going to go, of the trail.
Even though they didn't get an exact marking on the paved access path, do they have that?
Yeah.
So when we submitted for this request, a paved access path that fits their DPW property from the canal trail, that was clearly included where?
Prior to that, thank you.
So.
This was a prior permit, this is an existing prior permit.
Okay, all right.
I would agree with what Trustee Marshall was saying. We discussed this in meetings, that we were also going to ask for the permission for the trial. And the mayor had said in a previous meeting that I sent around that she was going to follow up with me and that she was going to send the map that we had given as a proposal for the trial. So even if that's adjusted in the future, right now, that's the intent about where it may go, subject to approvals and modifications. So we do have a space, we had discussed we were going to put this forward. And it's, it's a shame that it wasn't done. But at this point, I think the right thing to do is to deny it and get it done the right way.
Yeah.
Zach?
Doesn't say that you can't put the trail in, right? I mean, we still have the rights to the use of the property. And also.
Fond on that, Jeff, can you?
I wouldn't put a, I wouldn't put a trail in until it's outlined on the map.
There's no defined trail to go off of yet.
We have to start somewhere.
So that's, I don't, I don't want to hold up progress, is that, that's.
My biggest concern is we get blessed for our current actions.
That's, that's been the concern. And I know that that's probably a bigger deal overall, which is why we didn't want to hold up the trail behind those other things. But since we didn't follow up, as, as the mayor said that we were going to do, it puts us in somewhat of a bind now. And I think that.
I thought there was some doubt at the end of the, or the 20th meeting that trail was going to end up there. That was, I think, one of the things.
Arboretum track.
What?
Arboretum frame?
Yeah. Was that the best place for it? So that's all I want to say, is the other thing is Eagle Scout.
All right, let me ask, so let me ask a question. And I don't know if anybody is, knows the right answer to this. What is the risk that they don't grant what they just granted approval for? Because we asked for one other thing.
I think it's dangerous.
Okay.
It's a time, it's a timing and.
Okay, so then, so then at the expense of timing on an Eagle Scout project, personally, I would like to have one real estate permit signed with one, in the added request that a portion, the western portion of the property allow for a walking path within, with impervious natural surfaces to access the park behind the DPW. And it could be, it could be labeled within any 10 yards. Impervious, did I say impervious?
That's right.
It was a vocab word.
Sorry, I'm impervious.
Yeah, it was a vocab word.
I think I'm right, no, it's.
But something simple enough that allows us to use some amount of this property as an access path, however it gets done in the future, wherever it may be in the future, but that is the right location for access somehow, somewhere, right? Now, maybe there's a day that 10 years from now, I'm looking at the long-term plan and putting a budget in there for a building, some of this stuff has to all change. But what I don't want to do for the next 10 years is have people walk through the DPW to get to the arboretum, that makes no sense, right?
Did I make a point?
Yeah.
Is it possible then to just say, to include a trail to be determined rather than waiting on the correct location to be defined on the map? Because they're still in the process of trying to find the best location.
Well, I think that's what you said.
Yeah, that's why I was sort of saying western portion. But frankly, I don't care. If the New York state is willing to grant us the permission to have an access trail through that property, a nature trail, like pervious surfaces, right? Through that property anyhow, anywhere to the arboretum in the back, that's got to be in there. Yeah, because.
I kind of want to tell you, I don't think people do it in other places.
In specifics.
That's my gut.
Well, I think that it's, so the way that it comes through in the language on the permit, for example, with the road to the east of the DPW building, we're like, hey, this permit includes some asphalt road, right? So I think that if we give them the map and say, this has been locked, this has been blazed, this is what we're looking at right now. You know, if it changes, what is, what's going to come through on the permit is a trail.
Yeah, so if you say from the western limits of the property line up to the base of that burn, that there's going to be a trail there. And then that trail being defined is, you know, once you're holding that.
So we're specific, Vanessa's.
This is what we just got, sorry to interrupt, this is what we just got approval for, right? Two parking areas on the west side of the DPW building. That's the entire.
It says map, it says map, it's where, where they currently exist. There's a map.
So I don't see the harm in giving them the map they have for the proposed trial and say, this is what's being considered. And if we submit.
This is what we're asking.
It's a bad location. If you define that and you're pigeonholed through that, and you go back and change it. And I think until you pick the right location, you should not ask for a specific location. I was, that's not to speak, but I'm talking about public safety here, I'm sorry.
I would just point out, the only thing I'd point out would make is that there's already, this would be a second permit, because there's always a first, already a first one.
You already have.
You already have a permit. This is the first amendment. You always do a second, that's the last thing I say.
Well, let's, as we said before, when this came up in the meeting, the mayor was going to send them the map and it was going to be, that was going to be discussed. So I think we should send them to discuss it.
Can I make a suggestion? Can we table this action? We'll take the map, we'll contact Mr.
Pete.
Crusher. And if he says it's going to require more in-depth information, he can't accept the map, then we'll bring it back to the board, at least get this portion approved, and then go back and do what we need to do to get the trail.
And the map showing the trail that is currently opened up, that was just denied use?
I don't think that's the.
Use the, I think, use the one that Justin had provided, that was the blazed trail. Not to suggest we actually do it or not, or that it's ever opened to the public.
But isn't that kind of suggesting the use of the.
So proposed trial.
For that.
So what did the, what did the Eagle Scout do when, when they were proposing the pollinator garden? To propose pollinator garden? This is a proposed trial, right?
I guess I'm confused. Are we talking the trail through the arboretum? Or the trail alongside of the arboretum from the canal?
Trail from the path through the property to the arboretum.
The one we walked, that right now is not in the condition appropriate for the public. But more specifically, there's a track of land. So what I don't know, and Zach, you may, that burn, as it goes down to the west side, how far down that burn until you get into the marsh is still village property?
There's enough to put a trail.
Okay.
So that's what I was saying.
So what I'm suggesting is, the craft language that's open-ended enough to allow for that parcel that is currently designated park that abuts, is adjacent to the canal side property, to have some amount of space on that west side that gets you into the arboretum from the canal.
That it would be the quickest solution to this problem, including it open just avoiding the area that does not include the burn, but the western property line to the base.
Whether or not it is the burn or not the burn, we don't have to decide that tonight. All we have to decide is that personally, I want a permit that includes the right to consider and develop a pervious surface natural path to access the arboretum. And I don't frankly want to do it in two steps.
So I have a comment, so Justin, you said that the mayor had promised that she was going to give us this information. Do we know what happened or did she?
I'm not permitting to her conversation, so I don't know what she brought to the canal theory about it. She, you know, my understanding from her, since the one thing she expressed to me that was concerned is with the trail. There's no point asking for something until that trail is more defined.
My concern here is that, it's my belief that the mayor has a perspective with regards to the trail over that particular path and that it may or may not have been intentionally or accidentally excluded. But it's not, I think, the approach that she would like to take, and she stated so publicly. Whether or not that's the reason it didn't make into this or not, I don't know. But for my purposes, I want it included if I'm going to approve a permit with the state.
So what direction would the, would the board like to direct? Or do they have to go back to the engineer or to the canal corps and say, we would like to know if, if we can have this approved as it stands and add it back later? Or do we have to specify? Is that the question you want to ask?
I guess my, my suggestion is to table it, not to deny or approve.
What I would ask is for either Jeff or the mayor to share with us in advance the language that she is going to request to be added to this permit before final approval.
We don't suggest language.
Okay.
Can I suggest maybe reaching out to Kevin Varions in the canal park?
Perfect.
To find out what is needed?
Are they looking at this or?
Minimum, minimum necessary language to allow for us to create a pervious surface nature path on the west side to the west of the parking lots. Because they were pretty open in this language. And so get that language as loose as it can be, because to everybody, not all of us, but many of our points, right? We'd like to have a master plan of where are we going in 10 years for this thing. But in the interim, we don't want to have to go back and do this again. And I'd like to see that language in this permit before we go for any of the other things.
We were, we told them, I said, they ducktailed all those together and came up with this language.
Okay, so let's just ask them to include some language.
I certainly can come up with it. I certainly can come up with it.
I didn't know.
We just need some language included for the, I don't think that's came from them.
Yeah, so just ask for a loose language, similar to how they leave a pretty loose language on the parking lots. We're all trying to do the right thing here.
This is a contact, because I have not had any.
Having carried.
No, I have not, I am not the person contacting him for his part.
Are you talking with the village, the mayor?
Well, let the mayor address it and come back with a different permit.
So.
Yeah.
Court's just going to table this action for right now, try to bring it back. Hopefully, we can get this resolved.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
And my apologies if I put any words in the mayor's mouth that she didn't necessarily feel, but.
I apologize for saying what she did or didn't. Not fine.
Next is the, and you know, I never did that, so I'm assuming that you would have told us if there was any online comments that were.
We've gotten them.
Okay, okay, thank you. Review and update of the inter municipal agreement with the town of Pittsburgh. Again, it's been in our packet, we looked over it initially, and some changes were made, minor changes were made. Does, do the trustees have any more input? I do not.
I do not have some comment for it. Sorry, Justin interrupted.
No, I said, I may not have a chance.
Okay, would someone like to make, okay?
Actually, I don't want to be able to have the mayor forward this to the supervisor.
Yes, we're directing the mayor to sign the inter municipal.
Not forward it to the supervisor.
First.
For his review.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that.
Do we make a motion for that?
Sure, ask the mayor to do that.
Ask the mayor, make a motion to request the mayor forward the inter municipal agreement to the town supervisor, Mr. Smith.
I second.
Roll call.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Lickett?
Aye.
Trustee Napier?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you. The next is village slogan.
This was an item the mayor worked out.
Yeah, as I say, I must confess, I know you're just winging about this.
She has all the details.
Yeah, I have never even heard of anything.
No.
My comment being is, there's 378 responses, and I didn't see a survey.
I didn't see a survey.
Well, this was a grade school project.
Oh, a grade school?
Oh, this is.
Yes, coming from the kids. But I think she, the mayor did.
Yeah, here's the part.
Mayor did talk to the board about it before. I think she's the best person to explain the project and all that, I think, tabling it. It's, it was a school project, there was criteria, and they.
Oh, this is like a little school project?
They made this, yeah.
Thank you.
Here's my, here's my problem.
What?
Is that to have signs made with this adorable, they're all adorable.
Yeah.
They wrote, as our permanent entry to our village.
Yeah.
I'd like to at least, the climate slogan is, it's so darling, and they work so hard on them, and they're very sweet. But I think for purposes going forward, and costs cost money, these wooden signs are very expensive.
Yeah.
To have another possibility for advertising their, the winning slogan.
Yeah.
Maybe banners or something, I don't know, I'd like to discuss that with the board. But as far as, you're correct, I never saw the voting, I don't know who voted.
No, I think it was all, it was the tally.
It's a great project.
So we will take.
Yeah, they had a criteria, the mayor was the best one to.
The other is trustee Marshall's agenda item. It's called short-term rental permits for 2024.
Yeah, okay, so just, I know we're in a moratorium, I know we move forward to, we've got the committee together working on the short-term rental input, and it'd be good to maybe get an update where they're on, or when they think they might conclude, or have a first deliverable, because I know we're getting closer to next year. It's quite possible that they don't finish this, or we don't finish this well into next year, the beginning of next year, but the moratorium has a shelf life, right? I think it's December something.
January.
January, okay. So we need to see progress in order to grant extension of the moratorium, so hopefully we get some input over December to see where we go. But I would probably suggest we're going to need more than just January.
So they have to ask?
So what I ask is, is if we could, within a month or two, get some sort of deliverable to know what our timeframe is, because you're probably going to have to extend. We're probably going to have to.
We're not going to extend the moratorium, because if you give a deliverable by December, you won't be able to local odd director.
Yes.
Can I just ask, so the committee got together.
I sent you out an email.
Yeah.
About the time.
The committee got together in August?
I don't know.
We have no idea.
We don't know.
We've received no report.
Okay, so I really think we need a report at our next meeting.
I agree.
I mean, it doesn't have to be huge, but I need to know what's happening.
Yeah, like.
Our people attending, we got a lot of other meetings, we're getting information.
Yeah, do you, if you could, just invite one of the chair.
Invite the chair. I know the chair, I'll reach out, we'll reach out to the committee, we'll get a request.
Thank you, thank you so much.
And let them know within the next or the very next.
Yeah, the very next is the last.
But this permit thing, I think, is important, because when we go to craft language, we need to know a few things. We need to know, do we have a project or not? How many are there? Where are they? Right? There is a review process that we might put in place, who currently has one. I think it would be appropriate to require all short-term rentals, current short-term rentals, non-unoccupied and unoccupied, to have on file a permit. And that permit can attach fee, and it could very simply require inspection, right? Or whatever is appropriate. Very simple, and Steve, you may have some input.
Well, I think you should do it for all rentals, not for a short term. I think you should have a rental permit, because they should be inspected. Many municipalities have rental permits, we have fee schedules in our, not a fee schedule for rental units, but we have no language to be able to do a permit.
Okay, so that's a good point. So it could just be rental permits.
Right.
It'd be a lot safer.
Yeah, from a legal risk perspective, okay. And we could have an indicated on that permit, expected use, long-term rental, short-term rental. And if it's short-term rental, you could, I mean, really, you don't need to do anything. I just want to know where they are, how many we have, what address, and make sure you looked at the properties to make sure that they're safe for people to come and stay. And as we move forward, it would be nice to know, and I don't think I need a committee to tell me that we need that very, very basic data.
I would think it's, you want that data whether it's short-term or long-term.
Yeah.
So it would be great if you didn't put that category on the permit.
Right.
Oh, I think we should.
Use the terminology, short-term.
Well, we're going to use it in the code anyway, so we might as well know in advance. And just define short-term as rentals less than ninety days.
So I would think, would you inspect them any more frequently?
Once a year.
So what's the point of putting it on there if you don't really have to?
Because we're going to want to know.
Steve can tell you.
Because short-term falls into the Airbnb piece, doesn't it?
Yeah, and it seems to me you'd rather have that piece straightened out before you start differentiating on a permit, what you've got.
Because we have the short-term rental people working on the short-term rental piece. If you do a blanket rental, just a general rental process.
Here's my problem with that. When we go to design and discuss short-term rental code, right? We're going to then define what a short-term rental is or not. We don't have to use the terminology that puts us at legal risk. We could just ask a very simple question. Do you intend to rent your property for one year or less than ninety days? We don't have to give a definition, it doesn't have to have any legal standing, but personally, with regards to how we go about looking at short-term rentals and Airbnbs, I want to have an understanding of density, where they are, right? What the frequency of short and long are. Because if we like where we are, we need to know that ratio, we need to know that, because if things change over time, so let's say we go to 2025, 2026, and those ratios change, and we can correlate it to something positive or something negative, we may like that. So I think you always want to know what's short and what's long. And whether or not we have a code exactly defined for it or not, nobody's going to come back to us and somehow.
Say we discriminate.
We just need to know, is this a short-term or a long-term rental?
And you suggest ninety days, I just wanted to suggest I would do thirty days or less.
Sure.
Because like Alexandria is renting with no lease. She has a month-to-month lease, which many, many people have, they don't want to be tied to a long-term lease.
That's fine.
So the month-to-month would fall into that.
I agree with what you're saying, and I understand why, because of course, it's a different excellent starting point as we begin to consider any legislation regarding short-term rental. That being said, I think that as far as appearances sake, looking from the outside, anything, any action that we take that involves short-term rental ahead of the short-term rental committee coming back to us, sort of disrespects what they've done, and we've asked them, we've assigned them the chore. And once they come back with their information, then we will determine what our platform would be. To put a short-term rental registry in place, sort of presumes that we are going to either A, allow short-term rentals, which perhaps after study, we determined that we don't, and now we have a registry for short-term rentals, and we just allow that, just as an example. So if we don't use the term short-term rental, if we just use the very general term rental, then that gives the guidelines that building affected needs, that of course, perhaps we need, without specifying anything about short-term rental, and tying us in to a position that we have not yet determined is our position. This is just an example.
Fair.
It would still wanted to, you would still, if I'm going to.
Do you know where they are?
Yeah.
He's just collecting data.
You just need to know, you're not defining any rules or.
Right, he's just collecting information.
You're not being scripted like last week's agreement. The only thing you're going to say, this one is a long-term, this one's short-term, that's it.
That's it, we're not doing anything more, we're just collecting data.
And the reason why it's so important is because if you're saying we can't get it by requiring a permit, then I'm going to ask the short-term rental committee to get it. And the only way they can get it is to ask it of us to require it in a permit.
Right, so when they come back with their recommendations, the short-term rental committee needs, and they come back and they say, this is what we think, we don't think that we need any permits or anything. It's not a problem in the village of Pittsburgh, that's our findings, you don't need anything.
I disagree with them.
Then that, that is our, our job now, is to analyze that data and say, well, based on our history and our positions and, you know, the information we've gathered from our constituents, we feel this way. Thank you very much for sharing, thank you for sharing. And we look forward with what we believe is in the best interest of the village. Their findings are not binding to us.
Correct.
So, but I'm saying as a respectful gesture, we have charged them with the, with this task of researching, and hopefully it will give us a lot of valuable data. But we're not really asking them to reach a conclusion. So that's for this board. But what I'm saying is, if we establish this registry, now we're saying, yes, the village allows short-term rentals, and there's a registry, and I'm registered, and my short-term rental is registered. Am I thinking this incorrectly?
I think if Steve puts on his questionnaire, or however he does it, length of rental, that would be relevant to his considerations about the inspection.
Ah, great.
Great job.
That's all, Derek.
So I would like to move forward and request from Jeff. Or Jeff.
I have some examples, so I will get to Jeff from all municipalities for rental registration and permitting.
A rental registration and permitting.
I think it's valuable information for us as a board, some of the checks.
Yeah, the fees are already established in our, in our pre-study.
Oh, we already charge rentals?
For registration and inspections.
Right.
Just we don't have laws to allow me to enforce it.
I got it, okay.
Right, so we want, and then.
You want a rental registr, rental registration, local law, and then the fee schedule.
Yes.
Correct, that contains the information necessary to know that I had originally started the conversation.
Right, yeah, that's a really good point.
It's a good way to add that.
The rental registration.
Okay.
Yeah, so you follow that?
Well, it's going to be an inspection, you know, whatever you have, there will be part inspections and all that.
Fire and all that.
That's good, Dave, thank you.
Okay, and again.
Back to me.
So Jeff will, Jeff will work up some kind of.
Stephen will work something.
And then when you work that up, it comes back to us?
Yeah, yeah, you'll have to.
I think you probably ought to see some of those examples, so that you know you could have picked from Columbia, Columbia, Columbia.
I only have one interest, and so Steve, you can move forward with anything else, it'd be inappropriate.
I agree.
Anything is better than nothing, and we can change it every year.
Okay.
So.
Great.
But if there's things that you're like, do we need this or not, you want our opinion, bring it back. Okay, so permit uses by right zoning code discussion. Jeff, I'll need your help on this, because I don't really, I should, having been on the planning of zoning code for a while, but I'd certainly forget. As I think about the village and often comments that I hear from residents, and maybe some of us hear the same thing, and we ask, why is it we get so many hairdressers? Now, I don't have anything against hairdressers, I like hairdressers. Lovely people, and we have lots of great establishments here in the village that create foot traffic, people coming in and having lunch and staying for dinner, right? And it creates a degree of vitality. But it also, as I think about how the zoning code is, there are certain uses that are by right, and there are certain uses by special permit. And for example, a restaurant is by special permit, but a hairdresser or a shop is by right.
No, no.
We're all in special permits too?
They do?
Yes.
Okay, so one of the things that I think may be appropriate is, is I think about the health, welfare, and general safety of our community, the concentrations of use and the related chemicals associated.
Those are all the things, I don't mean to interrupt you, but you're absolutely right. They were all considered by the board, and that is why it is required that they have a special use permit. And the hairdresser, because they are using chemicals and other things, and they're disposing of them and so forth, so that's why they are required to have a special use permit.
Is it possible to simply have them not be permitted to use at all?
Hirsald?
You mean a more, more bond, a van?
New.
Moratorium of hirsald?
This first has.
I know, you have hirsald.
I'm not trying to start it.
You gentlemen, you have a blog outside.
This is, bro, not on the curb, the idea, every, listen, one out of every four people I talk to says, why do we have so many hirsals?
Because they have so many beautiful women.
It's true.
Can I speak to that issue?
Yes, please, say to me.
I'm not sure that I can, I just want to. You're in that foxhole.
There's an, actually, there's an economic reason. And that reason is because, because we studied this when we were working on the company as a plan. And that was, when we did the survey, many of our residents who were correct said, what the heck is with all the salons and hairdressers? The way that their business model is set up is that it's chair rental. So the owner of the business then rents spaces, so they are able to make their rent irrespective of how many customers they take care of. Where retail, you're very dependent on everybody who comes in there spending money, and you have to make your rent. They don't have that problem, because their rent is covered by their subletting, so it's lucrative. It's a business model that works. So if you're, you know, a person who wants to open a salon or a business, you're saying, hmm, okay, this is a good way to make money. It's not just, there's very little risk involved.
And isn't that kind of the same concept as this new pop-up market thing? Because, you know, we have the pop-up markets for Scotty, right? There's a person who owns it.
What is it?
Pop-up markets, you know how we have pop-up markets in the village, you know, with Scotty? Okay, same concept, right? We have the owner of the building.
Yes, that's right.
She rents a couple of months, so the same concept, perfect, right? Okay, so what other businesses can we do?
I'm still waiting for Jeff to save me.
Oh, Jeff, save them.
Can't save you on the whole philosophical discussion. But it's either permitted use or it's not. If you outlaw the use, then a pre-existing, non-conforming use can continue.
Good.
If you have it by special permit, you can't, the sheer number of that use is not a limiting factor.
Correct.
That you may consider, so.
As you're right, there's a tipping point.
So there's, there's no such thing as a tipping point.
And what I'm saying is, if you get six hairdressers. And what I'm saying is, if you've got six hairdressers on Main Street, and you've got 12 storefronts, there's a point where now you're nothing but.
Yeah, but we don't tell them that, right?
So, so I have the next follow-up question. If we were to zone it such that pre-existing non-conforming use-
You don't zone it that way. You just outlaw the use.
Yeah, okay, so, I'm sorry, the way, you don't zone it that way. I'm just saying, everybody who's there now, who we love, stays. And anybody new coming in, you could have, you essentially say that it's no longer permitted use.
Yeah, but if, if that use doesn't, just it's the use, it's not the business.
Correct. Sorry, the use, yes.
If there's a, if there's a spot at Point A-
Good.
They close, and another one comes in with a six months, then they can, they can do it.
Beautiful. And that's actually what you want, because you never want to disadvantage an existing business owner from selling to somebody else who takes that business and wants to do the same thing. Right?
Well, how about just bringing a brand-new business, their own salon, not taking over the others?
Well, so, yeah.
Supply and demand is going to define whether it works or not anyway. If you have too many hairdressers, some are going to drop out, you're going to get another business.
There are many beautiful women in Victor who come to our beautiful locations in Pittsburgh to get their hair done. And I wouldn't want to be the hairdresser capital.
I appreciate it, Jeff. I agree with you.
So the question is though, can you prevent, can you prevent a, 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 a building to not rent to a certain business?
Yes, if I had to not be it-
It's not permitted use.
To not be permitted use.
What if they, what if they defined it as a spa?
Well, that's different and lovely.
With hair.
Look, the definitions will handle themselves.
Yeah.
You tell me what you don't want, and we won't have it.
It doesn't seem, that's what I was looking at.
Provided, provided you pass.
Right. So the point that I'm trying to make is, we have lots of opportunities for locations that currently are either vacant or could become viable businesses, that as we think about the business models, you know, trustee Lanier, as you aptly put, there are certain models that are more easily able to meet rents than others. But that wouldn't be the reason alone to suggest that we've hit a tipping point relative to the, the use and the, and the challenges that come with it for the health, safety, and welfare of our residents. So it would be my personal preference to strike it as a permitted use, and then everything that is already here now continues to exist as we know it to be, and could continue indefinitely as such.
Okay. So here's a question that came up while we were talking about this very thing. And many of them also self-hearted. So they are considered retail as well. And as you know, we have what used to be called storefront zoning. They've since changed that name. But what it means is that on the first floor of our traditional downtown district, you want retail and things that attract, window shopping, and are interesting when you go by, which your hairdresser isn't necessarily. So the idea is that you have product that you're selling, displaying it in the window, you know, but something, you're walking cold off the street, and look, but you have to sell, whether it's jewelry or some clothing. And so the last couple hairdressers have, I haven't done the word for aesthetic salon, that have come in and also had that boutique element to it. So that's kind of what we're looking for, is to attract people in your door, not just because you're in there doing hair.
This is where the definition, we have to-
You could change, you could change the definition.
Right. Right.
How you want it, so.
Yes, but then we're asking those people if they claim that they're going to be retail as well.
So, yes, so in the front, you want, let's say they're on the door. That would be perhaps in the back and in the front.
So you can dictate how they space their-
When you say your windows, you have to, and your windows, you have to, yeah, wow. They'll be selling something.
I-
I think you do by primary use and-
It's retail.
Yeah.
Primary use of the-
Primary use.
So my question is, is that do we want to see more empty storefronts by restricting business?
We won't see empty storefronts.
We have.
It's not because-
Why not? I mean, this is the most lucrative business is a salon, and if, if they can't be there.
It's, it's a rent rate challenge, and a goals and objectives challenge of property owners in terms of profitability relative to demand. So if they know, so if we were to not permit hairdresser, new hairdresser, for example, going into Rachel's, right? You have a prime location in Rachel's. And imagine if that were to not go for retail, restaurant, or some other type of business, that if we get one more, possibly more lucrative style of business to go in there, the challenge is, would I rather have that property owner look for other alternatives versus accept that first application? And I think the answer is yes. And it's not as though they'd be able to Article 78 us or anything on having one denied use. So to me, again, this is speaking from so many conversations with residents, so many conversations with-
You're 690 commercial units right now.
Right. And, and this is not going to change that.
Wow, one hairdresser lady right around.
You could change the option for those, for those owners for use and paying money.
Yes.
And keep those storefronts active.
And, and what is the goal of any zoning or city planning or village planning, right? To try to encourage the outcomes that you hope for. And I think where I am now, when talking with so many residents, is they're hoping the outcome is different. And that would be what we would encourage. Now, I do think that there's reasons to go the other way, which is have permitted uses that might be special permits to be by right rather than by special permit. But that's another discussion.
See, now I think that the economic cost of our community is because the women that are coming to the salons are the ones that are going to the shops. Without those women coming in, who do you think goes to free home? Certainly not you, right? So, so the women that come to the salons are feeding the, the retail.
And we, so, so I guess the question is, and this is one that's the reason I'm bringing it up, to have the discussion that I think the public has essentially asked us to have, right? Is there a density of certain uses relative to the retail, where having just more retail or something different? Or are you suggesting that the, the retail growth will occur only if the hair salon growth occurs? So I'm not trying to take away any of the existing hair salons. And in fact, in Jeff's comment, they could exist indefinitely. I'm just asking that the next rental for commercial is not another hairdresser. For the health, safety, and welfare.
And I understand that, but how-
Wait, for a minute, I'm sorry.
Okay. But how would you, like, say, say a salon that will be, who decides to leave? Does that mean that her space is designated as a hairstylist space, that some other person can come in?
Yep, six months.
Just for six months? And then once that's gone, then, then what happens?
No.
So then therefore, you can't be in a hair salon anymore?
You could do by permit and say, there are, I'm going to make this up, 10 special use permits available. No, for, for a certain use, okay.
You cannot limit-
Restrict, okay.
Pre-existing non-conformant store with six months carry on, wouldn't it?
That's what I, that's what we said in our problems.
To your point, though, to Lisa's point, if you found that the salon left, and now we felt like we had an absence of enough salons that we wanted to allow for, you just change the law back to allow for that use by special permit? If you feel like you're losing them and they can't go back in, you just allow it again. But it, it's this question, in very many respects, we'll do the same things with tablets. Like, how many tablets and where do we want? Right? And eventually, you might have so many, restrict the number, right? And so it's just, again, I think it's a courtesy to residents to try to answer the question. And there's really, I think, this is the only means by which one could address it.
Looking forward, what do we do with coffeehouses? I mean, when we start getting a bunch of coffeehouses in the village, is that going to be the same issue? We're just going to start saying, right? I mean, are we going to start saying, okay, we've got, you know, way too many coffeehouses? We're going to have to start putting restrictions on coffeehouses. I mean, where do you draw the line? I mean, how can we target one trick of business?
Well, it's tough not being, having hair, how to answer that question. Anyway, we can move on.
It's a good thought.
If, if nobody wants to proceed forward, we'll move on.
Okay. Thank you very much, though, for that, because it is going to be, I think, discussed at a later, later date, because it's something that concerns all of us.
But that's how we do it. And so all I would suggest, if there's any members of this, you know, board here, or should the mayor listen to this meeting after the fact, if anybody has an interest in trying to address a general concern of residents, there's one way to do it that I've been presenting tonight, that is to move it from special permit to no longer permitted use. And other than that, there's no meaningful way by which we can address that resident concern that I've heard more than any other resident concern.
Really?
Pretty much.
So move to special permit?
No, move to a non-permitted use from special permit. And again, I wouldn't say more than anything else, but I do have things that I've heard. But it is certainly something that gets brought up a lot, and it's hard to answer it. And so now, at least we've had the discussion. I don't need to know which way I exactly lean. I just wanted to make sure we were on the same page.
Okay. I would like to beg the board's, and Zach's indulgence, although he is a part of this conversation as well. I'd like to change the order of the last two agenda items, or maybe there's another that I don't know, to discuss the benches. Does the board understand that the, this isn't any cost incurred to us? With the exception of the installation, I, I, I put the financials in the email so that you understood. We have two individuals who are interested in donating a bench. One individual has contacted me several times, and the other individual, the longtime village resident and village business owner. That being said, we have $2,500 budgeted to purchase benches for the village. In doing the research to try to get the IP wood, or IP or whatever-
E-Pay.
E-Pay wood, it was not available at any of the companies that I found.
Or teak?
What is it?
Teak.
Teak. Didn't see teak either.
There should be, so the reason why I'm going to say steer away from the oak is the oak is, it's, it's not nearly as durable, more maintenance, and it's not nearly as strong as teak, mahogany, or the E-Pay. Something with a very dense oily wood is what you want.
Is there a company, a specific company, that you have dealt with, that's the teak that you could give us or give me?
This would go back to, because Mary was doing all the purchases of the benches. So if you guys can look through the records of the last benches that were purchased.
I did. I did that.
Oh, okay. Then that would be the source.
They're not in business anymore. I went there. It was $1,300 for the bench.
Okay.
And it was for Maria Cook.
Yep, yep.
And that company was no longer in business.
There's, there's gotta be some of that.
I asked Alexandria to, you know, to try to find it in invoices, and it wasn't. So after a lot of research, the only thing I found was this NOF company, I sent you the information, they sent me the quote. It's good for another three weeks, the quote.
Yeah.
My whole focus is to get this set so that I can send the specs to the DOT for, to get the permit process moved along, because it takes so long. So I don't want to delay any further.
So you could probably use the same cut sheets as you have been using for the other benches, like on State Street?
Same what?
The, the cut sheets that show the mounting.
I never had any cut sheets.
You submitted those to the DOT for the permitting.
On, on State Street?
Yes.
I couldn't find that. I mean, I had, I think I had a, something from Scott or something with a color.
Yep. So Scott provided cut sheets on the mounting of those.
Yes. So I can just send that in?
Yeah, just as long as it's a picture of the way the feet are going to be mounted to kind of put it on the ground. So they can approve that it's going to be safe to put in the rest.
All right. Because, and the other part of that, of course, is to get Scott involved regarding the utilities and the mile markers and, you know, all of that, I just got the DOT ones.
Yeah.
My whole focus is, because I've been trying to do this for a year now, to get these benches ordered, because we have individuals who are asking for them.
I would say pinpoint location, and all the necessary criteria, a lot of the cut sheets that you have. Get that permit started.
Yes.
And in the meantime, find a bench, and they're all going to be similar. So find the bench that's going to work the best.
Okay, and the price point is about the same?
Well, I mean, it, it depends, because the market's kind of a little crazy. If you can find one that is teak or mahogany, if you can't find one that's teak.
I didn't see, honest to God, I looked at each one, and nobody offered teak.
All right. But we should, I think we were also discussing how long we want to have this bench as the maintenance responsibility.
Okay, so-
Which, which could determine, you know, how, how much money the donation's-
That's right, exactly. So that was part two of the discussion, that I was basing that on the quote that I received. But let's call it with the, with the plaques and everything included, it's not an installation cost or anything. Just for the bench and for the plaques, it's, it's a $1,000 cost to the village. Just for the material, just for the bench and the plaques.
Not the labor and everything else.
No, none of that is second to none. Based on that figure, what would the board feel comfortable as the price that they would say some of that, so about a bench, and this is how much it costs? It costs $1,500, it costs $1,700, with the idea that it includes the installation and the ongoing maintenance, let's call it for 20 years, just using my rhetoric.
Okay. So old benches, they require-
Yes, because we have, we had our earlier-
We must assume that on a yearly basis, those benches are going to have to be brought in all the waters, and you have to be stripped down and finished and refinished. So we'll figure this probably going to be maybe 15 man-hours per bench.
Per year?
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
15 man-hours per bench.
Per year, okay.
Per year.
Per bench, in a year.
For the, for the-
So it could be done in a rotating fashion? And not all the benches need to be done?
No, no, no. So the oak ones would have to be refinished on a yearly basis.
Okay.
If they're teak, mahogany, E-Pay, then we could probably do them every three years. And honestly, that's only if they're eyesore, because the gray wood does not necessarily mean that they are bad. I mean, it just means, I mean, that's the nature of teak and mahogany, is they gray out. They have so much oil in them that they're still resilient to the-
How many oak benches do you think that we have right now? Fifteen?
Five oak benches.
Oak benches?
Oak benches, about five.
So you're not talking about a lot of maintenance right now?
No, no, because we still have-
We have all the-
Seventeen other teak benches that we bring in.
Right, that aren't as high maintenance. So I am saying, I am asking the board for three more oak benches, because they're within our price point, and they're available, and we can get them ordered and get it taken care of. Three more oak benches.
Yeah.
So you want to know how much to ask me?
Yes, but-
How much money are we getting?
What Zach has been trying to convey to me for the past six months is that he doesn't want to deal with oak benches. He wants either teak, we talked about plastic, we eliminated that as an option. So-
And you can't find it.
And I cannot find it.
Is steel the notch?
It's what?
Steel or metal of some sort?
Not at our four corners, because this is where one of the benches is going, and I think there needs to be consistency. I'm saying going forward, from this point, I'm asking for these three benches. Then that's it. Done with the benches. Just these three.
Currently, we take in about 10 benches every year for refishing.
Yes.
So those are the oak benches, and then a rotation of the teak benches. So we add three more oak benches to that.
I see. So what do we have? I, I know, he's just, he's on there, he's all-
So, like, what do you have?
Give the benches their lives.
So Zach, I think she's asking what we should be charged for maintenance?
She's asking for my permission to buy two more.
No, 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 she's asking what should she charge? So she tells us what we should charge them.
So if you've got 15 man-hours per year, at $25 per man-hour, now frankly, it's more than that.
Twenty-five?
No, now we include the cost of running nails.
Including the, the paint.
All right.
And the stain.
Right.
Okay.
And the, and the stainless steel hardware, which is expensive.
Okay, so let's just go simply with 15 man-hours, $25, 20 years, right?
Yeah.
Isn't this helpful?
Over here.
Those slats won't go 20 years.
How long will they go?
We can probably get maybe-
Ten?
Yeah, I would put it more than 10 on the oak, just because you run out of material to sand with.
Right, so if you can get new slats, you can get E-Pay bench slats for $460. So after 10 years, you need new slats, upgrade them to E-Pay, $500.
So, hold on. Each cast leg is cast specifically for a certain thickness. So the E-Pays are running, the E-Pay and the teak are running about an inch to an inch and a quarter, and the oak is three quarters of an inch.
See, my thought is, it seems like we don't have like an expiration date. You know, these people will buy something that would be around for the rest of the history of Pittsburgh? Well, I think that's a little, that's asking a lot. I mean, I think the number of years should be a 10 or 20 years. I mean, I think the number should be a 10 or 20 year. I think if you can't expect that to this.
We do.
That's a great point.
This is just simple math.
Okay.
15 hours times 25 bucks an hour for 10 years is 300, $3,750. Okay? Yeah, so, so if you're adding the costs of other things, you're at least $5,000 not including the cost of purchasing.
Okay.
So I think you're at eight to 10 grand.
Remember?
Eight to 10 grand total.
Yeah, see, there's, there isn't any way that we're doing that.
No, you can't.
So the bench cost, how much?
For three benches, it's $2,961.
Okay, so $1,000 for the bench.
That's for three.
Zach, tell me how much it costs in materials per year?
Uh, finish 25 bucks per bench.
25 bucks per bench?
Yeah. If, if, if we have to paint the legs, depending on if they're eight-foot length trenches and they're three legs, um, and they're probably 30 bucks.
Is this something that you and Zach can do outside of this meeting?
What?
Just one.
Move forward is the board to have to sign. Because I need to get back to these individuals who have been waiting to know how much. Because we have had this program in place and, you know, he, he began by speaking with you. And it needs to happen.
But we, we can't tell you how much. It's something, right, we need to approve.
We're doing it here. We're close enough. So I just did 15 hours, 30 bucks, plus about 50 bucks in total supplies. It's 500 bucks a year. So 500 bucks a year for 10 years is five grand. Plus that $1,000 buy, we're talking six grand just to cover 10 years of life.
And there'll be a 10-year material when we're done.
And so if you're talking E-Pay, if you go straight away and somehow you can source it, it's probably only like three to four grand. But to do an oak bench, we got to target. If, if we're breaking even, you're talking six grand.
Yeah, no, we can't do that.
So we have to look through another bench.
So if you want to share in the benefit of that, so they're buying a bench. We're getting benefited as a community. So we want to.
There are amenities.
So we want to shoulder some of that cost, how much cost I willing to support. And it's probably a good, you know, couple of thousand bucks. So if you want to ask a resident for 4,000 or 5,000.
Depending on reasonable.
Yeah, I think we were at like $1,000 or $100 before.
When we first started, they were about 1,000. Then they went up to 13, 1,300.
But the thing is, is.
So even if with everything else, let's, let's say we set our bench program is going to be $2,000 a bench going forward. So these individuals will be donating $2,000 for each one of their benches.
But that doesn't pay for half.
So we're paying for four grand to have a bench for 10 years?
For something else? And you're not even saying 10 years, right? You're just saying to get it forever. That's forever.
Just like every other bench that we've had in this village. I think that villagers appreciate amenities. They appreciate having and, and the lots of serving.
But if you told all those residents that in their taxes, they're paying for 17 benches at $5,000 a year, I don't.
It doesn't come out that way though. I mean, certainly happened so far.
Well, you know, what I would say is if you want to do $2,000 a bench, I'm okay with it. But you got to wait for the E-Pay. And we just wait for it to be available. They can pre-fund it if they want.
So I, what the board is directing at this time is to, is to find the ippy wood or the teak. And do you think that you had an outlet for that?
No, I saw, I saw. I'm not sure where. I'm not really looking.
But 2,500 bucks for an E-Pay bench and all the care for the next 10, 15 years? That doesn't.
There should, there should still be a life of the teak or E-Pay benches as well.
Yeah, it should not be correct.
Be right up if you see anything.
Yeah, well, I think you can buy the, the cast iron benches and then buy the slats for another $500. And they're the three-quarter, uh, E-Pay slats.
Then maybe it could be interchangeable with the oak.
Right, so you could upgrade to that and kind of build that in. But yeah, I agree that we should all buy a bench for 20 years and we expect it to be done. Right?
And my difference.
Yeah, this sort of thing isn't legally binding, is it? I mean, if they buy a bench for 25 hundred bucks 25 years from now, are we bound to maintain that bench or what?
What? I'm sorry.
They're on some contract.
What if you privatized it? Like you can donate a bench for 2,500 bucks. That'll get you five years.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
No, I would rather err on that side than indefinitely.
Oh, absolutely.
So it's just a contract that we enter into?
It's not a contract. It's a, you're accepting.
Donation program.
Donation and I think the donation program should have built into it the conditions of.
So the letter of receipt or the letter that we give back to the resident after receiving the donation states exactly. And again, and in this case, I think it should be an E-Pay bench with a 10-year life for 2,500 bucks. And we could even have another program where if the lifetime is, is 10 years, then somebody can take over a bench and we refurbish it, repaint it and put it in.
For a regular race?
No.
Because you don't have to buy the bench.
No, full price is what we got.
Well, no, so.
Because you're, you know, your cost of that's.
I agree with this. This isn't about buying the bench. This is about the maintenance costs over the light of the bench. And so I think every bench that we have should have an opportunity to be basically resold.
Repurposed.
To bring in capital and naming rights and dedications and memorials.
Yes.
Right? And how we determine which bench, maybe we do three to five every year.
So wait, wait, one, because we are actually running out of space for the bench.
Right, we're trying to.
Take the old bench.
Take the old benches, just as long as.
And then slowly they start getting renewed under new donation programs at a cost that's trying to pay for the labor and the work. So it's a dedication program like Lion Brakes or whatever.
All that being said, I would like to know how you want to move forward with these two individuals who are waiting to hear. And one of them, I'm going to get emotional about because I've been trying for two years to get this bench for Frank. It's not right. It's not right.
So here's what I would say personally. 2,500 for E-Pay if you can figure out how to get it done. Five grand for oak if you want to get it done now. But it's a five grand.
For oak, it's.
For oak, you want to get it done now, five grand because the labor's three times as much.
For each bench.
If you're doing oak, otherwise you wait for the other one that's going to be.
2,500.
But it's 2,500.
I'm saying, there's, there's no way these individuals are going to go for five grand. And the village, it's $2,500 earmarked for the bench, for a bench. A bench.
So let's do this. You want three benches, right?
No, two.
I know, keep listening, let me reiterate. One bench has been purchased, meaning earmarked, but out of our budget.
Yep.
$2,500 has been earmarked with this bench for two years.
Okay.
It has not been put in place.
And this is for Frank Lucio?
This is, was going to be dedicated to Frank Lucio.
Okay, okay. Well, I, I think the board can decide if, if we want to invest in a memorial for somebody who's contributed to the village too. Yeah, I think we can just do that without asking. If there's additional maintenance costs, that could be our consideration as well.
Then we have another bench that was brought up in regards to four corners and the camouflageing of the utilities. And it was suggested, and I have spoken to, to him, that he definitely wants a bench for his father in this spot.
Yep.
Now you're saying I have to go to him and say, well, if you do, it's $5,000. Everybody else would. That would be your bet.
Here's the way I will phrase it. For the first bench for Frank, we've authorized $2,500.
Yes, but I, I want to be clear that at the time it was earmarked, it was not, the dedication wasn't specified. That came later. But it was a bench that was being bought by the village of Pittsburgh for the village of Pittsburgh.
Sure. So if the Lucio family would like to dedicate any capital and share in the cost of what we already.
I'm not one of them.
Then don't even do it. Let's just get it done by the bench.
Sorry.
Okay, so. This is, we can't source the E-Pay. Can we source the E-Pay at all?
Yes. As complete batch.
No, we can buy ends and we can buy E-Pay. Okay. So let's, let's just do that. Let's just authorize getting the bench for Frank and putting it where you guys have talked about.
Well, we owe her the E-Pay.
The E-Pay, just figure out how to put it together. Let's, let's.
Why, send me the link to the places.
Yeah, yeah, we can talk about this offline and then figure it out in the next meeting or something, right?
Okay, well, obviously, we are not going to come to a consensus about how much I should tell these two individuals. I will call them tomorrow and say the board has not yet come to a decision regarding how much the donation.
But it was like on the Saturday as well, when I talked to Mr. Newcomb. He also said that, that he was going to pay for the plantings as well. That was going to be a group he said he was going to do. He, he agreed that if we would put the bench, incorporate that into our design, that he would pay for everything. So, you know, we don't know what the costs of the plantings are yet either. So you can tell him if you want that we're waiting for that cost.
So, so, I'm not quite sure we need to delay. I mean, depending on the rest of the board members. But for the dedication to Frank, we just get the bench and we assume the cost. We dedicate it. There's no cost to the Lucio family as a result. We're welcome to ask them if they want to dedicate any, but we're not asking for it. The other benches, I think, I'm very comfortable with 2,500 for the E-Pay and five grand for the oak.
2,500 for what?
E-Pay.
And how much?
Five grand for the oak. Well, I don't even know if the 2,500 will cost the slats and the ends. I think we need to look at the. You mean the total cost of putting a bench together for E-Pay is more than 2,500? Well, I don't know. The, just the slats, it looks like it costs 500. And the ends are cast iron, so I don't know how much that's going to cost. Could be another $1,000 or something. I don't know. Um, and then you've got maintenance on top of that.
Why don't, can you, can I make a suggestion? Because you're spinning.
Sure.
Um, we're going to already go purchase, figure out how to get a bench and the good mater, and the better material for Frank. Okay, it's already authorized by the board. We're going to make that. Give us two, two weeks. Let's see if we, Zach can look at the site and see if it'll work for future benches so we can come to some kind of cost. And maybe in that amount of time, we can find some of the multiple adds we get into the haul. Maybe there's another one in there that might have another material that's acceptable.
And again, I'm asking, please don't move forward with Mr. Newcomb until we have the whole project cost. Because that was the agreement.
So I'm, all I'm saying is give us two weeks. Let's bring it back to the next meeting and see if we can find some resolution so we can solve your other two people. Frank will be taken care of one way or another. Give us two weeks on the other. Let's see what we can find and how.
We do have the bench locations all, all already earmarked.
That's fine. That's fine. But give us two weeks. Let Zach review the information that Dr. Lee like you found. Let's see if we can find some other sources to find some better material that isn't so costly to maintain.
Okay. The reason I said in order to medal is one of the benches is across from the oak bench already. You know.
So you wanted to give across the oak bench?
Um, in front of the bookstore.
Okay.
One is, I brought pictures to the meeting. Maybe you weren't here. There was a bench and there's another one talked about facing each other.
Yeah, I believe the one that's in front of the bookstore is in.
Bookstore.
Doesn't E-Pay.
Yeah.
Isn't it? Not that one.
What?
E-Pay.
Is it, whatever it is, it's been there.
So it's wood bench, yeah.
Do they work for the board?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Now we can move on to the.
And I'm going to ask that that's be tabled because really we can't even discuss this until the, um, the estimate is resolved with the now authority.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so that leaves minutes. Unless there was something added to the agenda after I picked up my tablet.
Well, we already did. It was long-term gap.
Right.
Result, so we're just at minutes.
So now we're looking at minutes.
Do you need me to stay for a minute? Do you need me to stay for a minute?
No, thank you very much.
Do you need me to stay for minutes? You know, we're.
Now that we're not doing that.
So if you could, uh, if you check out, uh, one goal.
One goal?
Yeah, for code section 210 dot 24 dot 10, which is the long-term storage in the public right of way.
Okay.
Something that's.
Or you could figure out something way in order?
In two years.
Or could you put a family on a library part mark?
Guys, we read if it's code issue, we don't talk on, in meetings, send them an email.
Oh.
Because it's, it's an investigation.
753216 goal.
Okay, I'm going to make us, it's okay if you may. I have a short report. I went to the leadership meeting today.
Jeff, wait, hold on one second. Jeff, before you go, real quick, I'm going to contact you, email on you so we can move forward with our three orders. I know I kind of like.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you very much. I would like to give you a brief rundown of what was discussed at the leadership meeting today. One of them was that Pittsburgh enjoys a top 1% of schools across the country. That is Mr. Pero's report. This year, there will be no park installed on Dr. Tollis's property by the time where the hot dog, the hot dog man is.
Yeah.
Okay, no park.
Oh.
Oh, great.
They ran the same issues that we did, cost escalating three to four times what they had originally estimated. And so no park this year. However, they are revisiting, I'm sorry.
That's 2023. They might revisit it in 24.
Yes, maybe. Okay. Then the median on State Street, which had been discussed previously and discarded because of the expense for this year, they are revisiting that in hope to secure funds, state funds in order to install it, maybe begin work in the spring.
Wow, John and I were talking about that.
So that would be, that would be most excellent. The question came up, we were asked about the Sutherland, Sutherland water main situation, whether our engineer had gotten back to us or not regarding the tie-ins because the original configuration was not working for the school district any longer. The concern was expressed over the loss, potential loss of trees on Sutherland Street. And so I was asked, I didn't have the answer. So I'm asking to get that information to Mr. Piro regarding the plan for the 75 Monroe infrastructure tie-in on Sutherland Street and what that looks like. I think that Scott Harder was going to review that and we were expecting a report from him. And they also mentioned tree losses, question mark. So they were also concerned about the number of trees that we've lost.
Okay.
Nothing about that, what happened there. Okay, so now the minutes.
Yes. Should we approve them one by one?
One by one.
Dorothy, I sent you a couple of corrections.
Yes, I got it. I thought I corrected them.
So on April, April 19, right?
Yes. So I'm abstaining, I'm absent.
Yes, you abstain because you were not.
Motion to approve.
Yep.
A second.
Dr. Lee Marshall?
Aye.
Dr. Lee like it?
Aye.
Dr. Lee Lampier?
Aye.
Dr. Coe?
Abstinent.
Not there.
Okay, true.
So the twenty-seventh, April twenty-seventh, I have a correction, under special permit application law thirty-two at the end, bottom of the page, first page, it said Ross Mueller requested a permit to play acoustic, but he, he's not from law thirty-two.
Ouch, never mind.
Right?
No.
He's from later seven.
I missed that, thank you.
So I wasn't clear whether law thirty-two had asked.
No, it was Ross.
Okay.
No, I, I didn't remember the application, it was later seven.
Okay. Did you have any on that one?
Uh, any of the ones that I submitted?
Yep.
Um, I can't remember if it was on that or a different meeting.
I would just say with the correct, because I'm forced to.
Oh, okay, twenty-seven?
Yep, okay, so.
So I make a motion to approve the minutes for Thursday, April twenty-seventh, with the correction, um, that we just stated, label seven instead of back, back thirty-two?
Just the corrections.
The corrections, okay, got a second?
Resident, okay, Trusty Marshall?
Aye.
Trusty Coe?
Aye.
Trusty Lightyear?
Aye.
Trusty Lampier?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Now we, are we on May eleventh?
We are.
Yeah, and you were not there, were you?
And I was not, but there was a correction, uh, Scott Harder's name on one of these was spelled H-A-R-D-E-R, not that that's critical, but I just thought I'd point it out.
It is, it's our editing problem, sometimes change.
Um, you know what, I'm sorry, Dorothea, on April nineteenth, can you list me as absent, I'm not on there at all. Please.
Oh, she just didn't include.
Yeah, just put absent, thank you. So May eleventh?
Okay, so May eleventh, I'll fix, just put with corrections and I'll fix that.
I'll make a motion that you hear the minutes for Thursday, May eleventh, with corrections.
I second. Roll call.
Trusty Lightyear?
Aye.
Trusty Coe?
Aye.
Trusty Mar. Marshall?
Aye.
Uh, Trusty Lampier, you're going to.
That was absent.
Motion through, passes.
Okay, now on June twenty-first, that's where the correction of Scott Harden.
Okay.
Under GPI contract review.
All right, I'll make it happen.
It should be harder?
Yep.
Any other corrections? I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from Wednesday as corrected, June twenty-first, second.
Okay, Trusty Marshall?
Aye.
Trusty Coe?
Aye.
Trusty Lightyear?
Aye.
Trusty Lampier?
Aye.
Motion passes.
On Monday, August twenty-eighth, uh, it's a minor typo, it's, uh, with prism on for I Atlantis, not Atlantis.
Sorry, I don't think we have a quorum to adopt this one.
Yes.
Oh, I was, no.
Those two people have some help.
It's just you, I.
Yes, we need the mayor.
We need the mayor.
Okay.
Oh, there's, I can't do that one, sorry.
No, she had got it done quickly. All right, we'll correct it and we'll re-present next meeting, um, the problem we're running into is, just so you know, just getting everything edited, corrected, meeting is going forty-five hours, it takes us ten to twelve hours to do the minutes, to go through and make sure.
Okay.
And especially. So.
Is it possible to?
Do we have any more member items, I'm sorry, I struck in with my, I need to get the leadership report, forgot.
No, go ahead.
No, I, I gave it, I gave.
Oh, yeah, I was just saying, uh, minutes are good, do you guys like them at the length that they are, do you find value in them? And, I mean, I thought these were, well, really, it's just a question of, is it worth the time and the commitment of staff to get them at this quality?
Right.
You can look at it while.
Um, legally, just so the board is aware, all we require to record is motions and seconds, I try, that's really it, um. We try to add a little flavor, so it makes some context, I think newer people are adding more and more, so we need to back it off a little bit, but let us know if we back it off too much.
Okay.
Okay, because I, I never like to really, we got into too much of the habit of quoting one trustee, this trustee, and it causes problems, we really need to give us just a flavor.
I think it's all recorded now.
Yeah, it's all in video.
The key is, you don't want to add color that it could be considered.
Either side.
Either side.
Right.
You want to be careful to, uh, I mean, you want to identify the difference to the degree that it's helpful for somebody to understand why somebody voted nay or not, but if everybody's in agreement on a particular issue, just say, you know, the board talked about this and these things and then move on.
Right, right, right now, I'm reviewing something where the algorithm was an hour and a half discussion, I don't think we want that.
That's correct, I mean, in the end, was the motion granted or not?
Right, just so we, we go to key points and then we'll end all the comment.
Think we were quite a bit shorter as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, I just, we're trying to, we want to be there, but now we have the videotape, it's on there, if somebody really wants to watch it.
Yeah.
Okay, I was also asked to bring to your attention, uh, the notifications, some people are not getting the meeting notifications, they were previously, but they're not any longer.
I. They go out, we, we can go in and delete them, I can go in and delete them, I'll tell you I don't, because that's the worst thing I can do, because I get those calls. I will, if somebody, let, tell them to notify me, I will make sure it goes back in, they have to prove their authorization blocks to email, but again, it goes back to, we need a new website.
Yeah.
And it's through the website, that's coming through, so I don't know, sometimes the website glitches or what it's doing, because we don't individually set it up.
Does anybody have an estimate of what a website is going to cost? Should we put that in the long-term capital plan?
Not when you got four months.
Is that going to be a special meeting?
I got to have it out, I got to move it by December.
Really?
Yes.
Why?
Because you might pay twice the cost per day for a website, just because they want to do it.
Oh, the existing website, we can just put on a different, um.
Well, no, that's theirs, we go through the contract through the company.
We don't own any of our websites, we don't own the code or the, anything?
No, no.
Well, that's not true.
Yep.[1751.15]